Those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There's several ways to participate. For those attending in person, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to our city clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you'll be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand. And when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. We are very excited to start with a ceremonial item, the Fair Housing Month proclamation. And can I please invite Josie Fulton up to accept our proclamation? Thank you. Whereas adequate housing is a basic need and right of all people. And whereas this year we celebrate the 55th anniversary of the enactment of the Federal Fair Housing Act of 1968, which states that discrimination in the sale and rental of housing is illegal when based on race, color, religion, sex, or national origin. And whereas the Fair Housing Amendment Act of 1988 extends fair housing rights on the basis of familial status to families with children and on the basis of handicapped to disabled people. And whereas California statutes additionally protect citizens on the basis of age, marital status, sexual orientation, gender identity, and source of income. And California celebrates its 62nd anniversary of the Fair Employment and Housing Act. And whereas the City of San Mateo supports fair housing efforts to eliminate discrimination in housing and recognizes the benefits of Project Centennial to educate home seekers, apartment managers, and apartment owners on federal state housing laws and to investigate complaints of illegal housing discrimination in San Mateo. Whereas, in order to heighten public awareness, the City of San Mateo wishes to focus public attention on April as Fair Housing Month. I therefore, Mayor Amherst Lee, do hereby proclaim on the month of April 2023 as Fair Housing Month and do encourage all residents and community organizations to celebrate the value of harmonious and diverse communities of neighbors and to support the goal of equal housing opportunities for all people. Would you like to say something?
Yeah, certainly. Yeah, I just want to thank you all for supporting Project Centennial and our efforts to affirmatively further fair housing. So yeah, I really appreciate your time and for announcing April's Fair Housing Month. For all those people here, if you're facing any kind of fair housing issues, you can look us up at www.housing.org and give us a call and we'd be happy to help.
So thank you. Wonderful. Here you go. And this evening, we recognize the positive impacts of volunteerism and service in our community. The City of San Mateo partners with several businesses, nonprofit organizations, foundations, and individuals who volunteer their time and energy to serve their fellow citizens. This evening, we are recognizing five outstanding volunteers who are deserving of our gratitude. Randy Raphael, Walter Hu, Lauren Coleman, Carrie Mitchell, Casey C. Miller Mitchell. The San Mateo City Council thanks each of you for going above and beyond. And I would like to call up each of you to accept your... Oh, and Denise Garcia would love to make some comments. Thank you, Denise.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Denise Garcia and I'm a management analyst in the City Manager's Office and I also oversee the citywide volunteer program. Thank you for the opportunity to highlight this year's outstanding volunteer honorees that are selected to be the faces of volunteering for the city. And I just want to highlight that this month, this week in particular, is Volunteer Appreciation Week. So this is perfect timing. Our citywide volunteers make huge impacts in various aspects or areas throughout the city, including city departments, the San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department, boards and commissions, and many of our self and community-led groups and activities. Last year, we had approximately 1,700 volunteers lend a helping hand totaling 43,000 volunteer hours. Thank you. Today, we are highlighting, yes. Today, we are highlighting five volunteers who shined this year. So the first one, if Martin can please, yeah, thank you, is Carrie and Casey from our Team Up to Clean Up program. Carrie and Casey have been active participants of the program since the very beginning, when we started hosting our once-a-month cleanups. They are a mother and daughter duo who continues to show up for our monthly cleanups throughout San Mateo. Their contributions help keep San Mateo beautiful and debris-free. Our Team Up to Clean Up program would not be the same without this dynamic duo. Thank you, Carrie and Casey. Thank you. And next, yeah, I'm going to go through them all at once. And next, we have Coach Walter from Parks and Recreation. Walter volunteered this season and coached a Division One team, grades third to fifth. Walter was an amazing coach and never lost focus of the main goal of having fun and developing the players even when his team was losing. You can't say his team didn't have the greatest start by going zero to four and losing multiple games, but they definitely had one of the best finishes. He was able to keep the kids focused and energy in the right direction and ended up finishing the season in third place. He made a huge positive impact on the local community and we need more people like Walter to volunteer to make positive memories and impacts in the local community. Thank you, Walter. Next, we have Coach L, or Lauren, from Parks and Recreation. Coach L volunteered her time to coach a Division Two team, which were grades sixth through eighth this season and didn't have anyone actually from her in the league. She is someone from the community who reached out saying that they're interested in volunteering and she couldn't have been a better fit for the Junior Warriors program. Coach L was truly an amazing coach and is an amazing person. Anytime you see her, she always has a big smile on her face, as she does now, and is always in a very happy mood. Anyone would love to be around her. She made such a positive impact on the community that we cannot wait to have her back next season. So thank you, Coach L. And last, but certainly not least, we have Randy from the CERT program with San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department. Randy is a resident of San Mateo and has been part of the CERT program for about nine years now. He's also a licensed amateur radio operator, a CERT ambassador, a member of the CERT trailer team, and is the CERT leader for his Emergency Response District in San Mateo. Randy is always among the first to volunteer for trainings or events and was among the first who volunteered when a temporary evacuation point was open at the event center. Randy brings his experience, his appreciation of training, and his great sense of humor to his service as a CERT leader and volunteer. He is always there to support and inspire his fellow CERTs. Randy says the best part of CERT is my fellow CERT members and the people we help. Thank you to Randy. Let's give it up. Thank you again to all of our volunteers. Your service is very much appreciated.
Through the mayor. If I may, I want to reach out to our attendees joining us on Zoom and invite you to please wait to raise your hand until we've called the item you wish to speak on because I can't tell what you want to speak on. So if you could lower your hand now and wait till whatever the item is you want to speak on to raise your hand, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
So inspiring to see all of the volunteers contributing. Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any... Oh, no, sorry, skipped one. Next on the agenda is our consent calendar. Deputy City Clerk, would you please read the consent calendar?
With pleasure, Mayor. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number three, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number four, Measure S Oversight Committee Appointment Subcommittee Appointment Recommendation. Senior's item number five, Cedar Citizens Appointment Subcommittee Appointment Recommendation. Item number six, Library Board Appointment Subcommittee Appointment Recommendation. Item number seven, City Council Priority List Adoption. Item number eight, San Mateo County Exposition and Fair Association and the San Mateo Consolidated Fire Department Memorandum of Understanding and Agreement. Item number nine, Planet Equity Group LLC Professional Finance and Human Resource Services Amendment. Item number 10, Annual Investment Policy Approval. Item number 11, Department of Information Technology Classification Updates. Item number 12, Tree Pruning Maintenance and Emergency Removal Removal Services Agreement Amendment. Item number 13, California Board of State and Community Corrections Officer Wellness and Mental Health Program Grant Appropriation. Item number 14, AB 481 Annual Military Equipment Report Approval. Item number 15, School Crossing Guards 2023-2024 Agreement. Item number 16, Police Duty Weapon Replacement Agreements. Item number 17, County of San Mateo Human Services Agency Access and Use Agreement. Item number 18, City of Foster City Usage of Police Firing Range Facilities Agreement. Item number 19, City of San Bruno Usage of Police Firing Range Facilities Agreement. Item number 20, King Ridge Sewer Line Improvement Mitigation Site Project Amendment. Item number 21, Coyote Point and Poplar Pump Stations Design Services Amendment. Item number 22, Downtown Parking Equipment Networking Hosting and Materials Amendment. And finally, item number 23, Multi-Hog Compact Multipurpose Sweeper Purchase Contract.
Thank you so much. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on any consent calendar items? Now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only.
Madam Mayor, I have no in-person speaker slips and no hands raised in the Zoom.
Great. Is there a motion from the council to approve the consent calendar?
I make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the role?
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Nash?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Wonderful. I would like to invite any new commissioners that were appointed in items four, five, and six up to the front to receive the oath of office. Please join us.
You guys, I'll face me. All right. So we're going to do this all together. If you could please raise your right hand. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations.
Madam City Clerk, could I ask the commissioners just to introduce themselves, their names, and the new commission that they've joined, just for the public?
Good evening. I'm Bill Yang, the Measure S Committee Oversight Committee.
Welcome. Thank you, Bill.
Richard Weisong, the Library Board.
Congratulations.
My name is Tom Lee. I'm with the San Mateo Senior Center Senior Commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Save the best for last.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I'm Sheila Kansin, a resident of San Mateo and will be appointed or have been appointed to the Library Board.
Congratulations. Moving on, next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any agenda item, sorry, on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. And Madam Clerk, would you care to provide some guidance to the public on decorum?
Yes, I'm happy to do that. We, in this meeting, we have a policy of give respect, get respect. And what's really important is that we don't clap, cheer, jeer, boo, do anything like that because everybody's voice is welcome to come up and give public testimony or public comment on any item. So we highly encourage you to please let each speaker have their say and please be respectful from the audience as they're speaking and not clap, cheer, jeer, or anything like that.
And what's our count?
So in person, we have 14. And if you can please, 15. And if you can please raise your hand right now in the Zoom if you're intending to speak under public comment. Looks like we have an additional eight there, nine now. So please raise your hand right now on Zoom if you intend to speak on this item. So while they're raising their hands, Mayor Lee, we can, council can go ahead because we know we have quite a few speakers this time. If council chooses to extend the 15 minutes to just get all the speakers in or not, that's, please provide that direction.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay, so these are three-minute public comment, what we usually do. Okay. So we'll start with the in-person. First, I want to say there are 11 remote speakers. I'm going to state your names now. The very first is Stu Bruins, Richard Nive, Willa Falk, Dan Schoenberg, SM, Chris Caffey Joly, Vikas Maturi, John Brook, Karen Moan, Jordan Grimes, and Joyce. The last speaker that we will have on remote is Joyce. Okay. First in-person speaker, I'm going to go ahead and call you three deep. If you can line up against the wall so we can move expeditiously in between speakers. The first speaker will be Michael Weinauer, followed by Tasso Zagroffus, and then Lisa Tanner.
Two weeks ago, the San Mateo County DA released their report on Mayor Lee's allegations of vote extortion, resulting in the defamation and removal from consideration of respected Commissioner and community leader Cliff Robbins. Lee also impugned councilmembers Newsom and Diaz-Nash. Councilmember Lorraine is also implicated as he seemingly corroborated Lee's claims, saying he had received an email making similar offers. The report found no evidence to support Lee's claims. A deeper reading of the report shows that Lee attempted to involve and impugn several prominent fellow Democrats and now former allies, former Mayor Joe Gothel's, Nicole Fernandez, and David Berudo in a brazen attempt to lend veracity to her claims. One has to wonder, as a Lee ally or a fellow council member, who's next to be thrown under the bus? To sum it all up for the layperson, Mayor Lee made it all up, all of it. She lied to the council, she lied to staff, the city attorney, the city manager, the candidates and residents during the process, and continued to apparently lie to the press, her supporters, and even investigators. But why? Simple, to ensure the appointment of her desired choice to the city council, ensuring a continued majority, enabling her to drive her personal agenda and protect her friends Rogue Planning Commissioners Seema Patel, Adam Nugent, and John Ebner. The lies in and of themselves might not be grounds for action, but the intent with which they were levied certainly is. When combined with the myriad other offenses such as abusing her mayoral powers to revisit land use decisions already established by the council because she didn't like the original outcome, I mean, who wears a shirt with skyscrapers on it if out of nothing but disdain for the residents who don't want them to the meeting on that topic? To failing to hold Rogue Planning Commissioners Seema Patel, Adam Nugent, and John Ebner accountable for various incidents of stealing, campaign tampering, and blatant attempts to encourage the HCD to reject our carefully wrought housing element, much to the detriment of all San Mateans. Mayor Lee has failed us and shown that she lacks the capability of governing. Importantly, we have witnessed no remorse, contrition, or attempts at compromise or coalition, just a doubling down on name-calling and misinformation. We are not a, quote, "small group of conservative anti-abortion interests," as Lee's website claims. Five esteemed former San Mateo mayors, Cherry Hill, Claire Mack, Maureen Ferskett, Carol Groom, and Eric Rodriguez, support this recall and have called for her resignation as they see real damage being done to our city and by extension, their reputation and their legacy. This effort has nothing to do with hate. It has nothing to do with race, gender, religion, orientation, as Ms. Lee would have you believe, but rather about repeated egregious behaviors demonstrating the lack of the most fundamental qualities we expect in our elected officials, honesty, integrity, and accountability.
Thank you.
That is why I stand before you, Mayor Lee, and demand your resignation. On behalf of a broad coalition of San Mateo residents, we'd like you to stand up.
Thank you, Michael.
Barring that, this council must take action.
Next speaker is Tasso Zagroffus, followed by Lisa Tanner, and then Dave Cohen.
Since the time Amherst Lee took office, we have witnessed her lack of judgment, poor performance, special favoritism for her cronies, and have watched her focus on doing what's best for her personally while disregarding and failing to address the needs of our residents, our city. I and so many others love San Mateo and we absolutely deserve better. They say in time all things are revealed and the truth will be known. And here we are. Amherst Lee, your lies have caught up with you. Your dirty political theatrics and bully tactics have been exposed. You have once again dishonored yourself and also tarnished those around you. But more importantly, you have broken our public trust. And while you may look in the mirror and forgive yourself for all your lies, falsehoods, schemes, bully tactics, excusing them under the guise it's all in the game of politics, you absolutely do not have the right to tarnish our city's governance and public trust. You may throw a rock and break your own window at your own expense, but you don't have the right to break glass in our home and shatter our public trust without consequence or penalty. You need to resign, and I know that I'm not alone in saying we demand it.
Thank you. The next speaker is Lisa Tanner, followed by Dave Cohen, and then Lisa Van de Vorte.
Good evening. After the DA findings, this meeting cannot be business as usual. Amherst Lee, I hesitate to address you as council member. You have debased yourself and dishonored your constituents and your position. I listened to you speak at the December meetings about transparency, credibility, and integrity. But now the entire public knows that was hogwash. You have none of those things. If you wish to preserve a shred of your dignity and do right by the people of San Mateo, you will resign from council. Two of you are seated due to Lee. Is your loyalty to her or to the voters? Council members, it is fully in your hands where San Mateo goes from here. If Lee refuses to step down, we look to you to remove her. Or will you allow Lee's corrupt, unprincipled, and untrustworthy behavior to be the new low bar for San Mateo, the city that takes so much pride in leading the way? The status quo is untenable. No repairs can be made without major change. I understand that soon the former mayors will again state their case against Lee because everyone knows where the rot is at City Hall. The residents want, demand, and need it to be removed.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dave Cohen, followed by Lisa Van de Vorte, and then Andrew Sevillia.
Good evening. I'm Dave Cohen. I'm a resident of the City of San Mateo and part of the leadership of Ethics San Mateo and speaking for that organization this evening. Our mission is to lead and support efforts by the residents of San Mateo to ensure our city is served according to the highest level of ethical standards and ethical behavior. We stand firmly for the principles of truth, transparency, and ethical conduct by our city government. Ethics San Mateo is issue agnostic. In other words, we're not going to campaign for 12-story buildings or three-story buildings. We're all about the ethical conduct of that discussion. Ethics San Mateo is not, at this time, taking a position on the effort to recall you, Mayor Lee. We have, however, issued a statement, a statement of position regarding your conduct. You have overstepped the bounds of even the most minimal of ethical standards. This has led to an erosion of public trust in this body, in our governance. There are no provisions, other than for certain criminal convictions in our city charter, for any action amounting to effective disciplinary action against a member of city council. It seems that even a majority, a majority or even four out of five council members cannot impose any meaningful discipline, penalties, or anything else on your membership. The city attorney and the city manager can't do anything. They can only provide guidance and advice. Ethics San Mateo believes we now find our city in this turmoil because of this lack of clearly defined enforceable standards and an independent body to enforce those standards. The council had an opportunity to prioritize a discussion, just a discussion, just a discussion of what council member Newsom described as an ethics committee, but you chose not to. You don't want it. I don't know what you're afraid of. You chose not to. Ethics San Mateo asks you to revisit that decision and proceed in the establishment of an independent ethics commission as part of our government, a part of our governance. What could be a higher priority than ensuring ethical conduct by you, our city officials? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa Van de Vorday, followed by Andrew Sevilia, and then Jeff Lamont.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Lisa Van de Vorday, and I'm a resident of San Mateo. I'm speaking tonight to add to the letter I sent earlier today asking for Mayor Lee's resignation. Should she not resign, I am asking the rest of you to make the decision for her and ask her to step down. At minimum, I would like to see a vote tonight for her censure based on her false allegations in December, which in essence resulted in selection process tampering. Where do each of you stand? Do you condone blatant lying by your colleague, our mayor? Only through your actions, either by asking her to resign or by voting for her censure, will the good people of San Mateo know whether or not you find this kind of behavior acceptable by the mayor of our good city. I'm here to tell you that I do not. People are here tonight saying that they do not. It's time for our city council to take a stand, once and for all. What say you? Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Andrew Sevilia, followed by Jeff Lamont, and then Mitch Spiegel.
Dear Mayor Lee and esteemed members of the San Mateo City Council, I'd like to express my sincere gratitude for this opportunity to address you tonight. As a member of this community, I believe it is my duty to share my thoughts and opinions with you. Mayor Lee, I had the pleasure of participating in the San Mateo City Services Academy program alongside you in 2018. From the outset, I admired your unwavering commitment to serve the community. Your dedication to public service has been evident. However, I have noticed a change in your approach to governing. While previous city council members were generally courteous, I've found some of your comments to be insulting and dismissive. Nevertheless, that is not the reason I am speaking to you tonight. I'm disappointed by the manner in which you handled the appointment of the vacant city council seat, your allegations of backroom deals and illegal discussions regarding power lacked substantiation. There is no evidence to support your claim of corruption within the city council. Regardless of the outcome of the recall effort, your legacy will forever be associated with the infamous Manila envelope incident. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jeff Lamont, followed by Mitch Spiegel, and then Ronnie Eaton.
Good evening, council members. My name is Jeff Lamont, and I'm a resident of San Mateo. Mayor Lee, you have lost the trust of your constituents. The county DA, Steve Wagstaff, recently found no evidence to support the false claims you made against Cliff Robbins in December and that there was an attempt to corrupt the city council voting. No more business as usual. The honorable thing for you to do is to resign your position on the city council. And I ask that if Mayor Lee is unable to do that, that the city council members take the matter in their own hands and remove her from the city council. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mitch Spiegel, followed by Ronnie Eaton, and then Thomas Morgan.
Hi, City Council. Mitch Spiegel, District 5. I just wanted to talk a little bit about today about accountability and how important I think it is in our, not only our process, but just our democratic way of governance here in San Mateo. From the sign stealing incident to some of the claims that you've made, Ms. Lee, I echo what Mr. Cohen said about there being a lack of any way to have that accountability. There's no way to discipline. There's no way to even bring this so that we as citizens can see that you guys are looking at it seriously through a real serious lens. So what I'd ask for tonight is that if you guys see it, you know, as, as just, is to look to establish some form of independent oversight committee so that not only can we have these issues addressed, but we can have them addressed in a manner that doesn't put the weight on your personal shoulders. Things, whether it's outside criminal activity, whether it's, you know, mistaken opinions, et cetera, needs to be looked at under a close lens if we want to have ownership of our citizens here in San Mateo. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ronnie Eaton, followed by Thomas Morgan, and then Linda Bald.
Good evening, City Council. Mayor Lee. I'm going to put my glasses on. Like a number of people in the community, at one time I was a potential in your leadership, Mayor Lee. Having attended some past community meetings where you appeared engaged and eager to ask good questions and find solutions. Unfortunately, that persona was not real. After hearing your comments from the Housing Leadership Council meeting held after Measure Y passed, when State Senator Scott Weiner congratulated everyone for having made inroads into local government, you said the fight is not over. You decided to fight the San Mateans that do not agree with your agenda. You decided to fight instead of collaborate. You decided to divide. You have consistently sought to divide our community by race, by income level, by address, by age, and by our faith. You decided to lie. Why? You made the choice to lie and collude and subvert a public process for the selection of a member to the city council by making a false claim of an attempt to extort your vote to support Cliff Robbins. You did this because you wanted to seat your preferred candidate in order to secure a progressive majority and ensure control over development in San Mateo. You wouldn't accept what the people voted for. So you decided to lie to get what you wanted. Many of us knew your claim was a lie from the start, and the district attorney simply confirmed it. You chose this path, and you will be affected by your decision. You have disgraced yourself and disrespected the position of the mayor and the people of this city. And that is not the San Mateo way. Thank you.
Next speaker is Thomas Morgan, followed by Linda Bald, and then Gerald Moreno.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Thomas Morgan, speaking as a private citizen. I do not look forward to making this public comment. Usually when people come up here, they're speaking about something passionate, but it's very disappointing over the past week and a half, two weeks, the disappointment in the behavior of Mayor Lee. Since last summer, there have been five reputations pretty much destroyed. And just watching city council meetings, I hear council members asking for the opportunity to speak, and I've never heard a mayor say no, and I've heard that several times. So I'm looking to council to look further into this matter and bring forward a proper resolution that would equal the damage it has been created by the actions. Thank you.
Next speaker is Linda Bald, followed by Gerald Moreno, and then Maureen Kilo.
Good evening. My name's Linda Bald. I've been a resident of San Mateo for over 40 years. I'm here not to talk about Mayor Lee. I'm here to talk about trash. And I was one of the founders of our San Mateo Team Up to Clean Up. And I'm here to say thank you to our city, to our Public Works people. I started this on Nextdoor. You know, Nextdoor, where a bunch of crazies are, right? Including me. So I started it at Nextdoor because I was with my grandson, and we found some ducks swimming in the wash area by, across from the car wash off of Delaware. And I wanted to bring him there to see the ducks, and they were swimming in trash. And that just broke my heart. And then on Nextdoor, somebody said that they were cleaning up a street with their daughter. And I thought, well, I could, we could do that with the, with the wash, even though it's locked and don't tell anybody, but you can easily hop over that fence. And so this began Team Up to Clean Up, and somebody said, Roxanne, with Public Works, will provide the cleanup. And long story short, now here we are, as you could see, honoring people. And this is because the city listened to us and went out of their way to support a citizen effort to just pick up trash. So here is my ask. Every month, we pick up trash, the third Saturday of every month. It's a lot of fun, you guys. You can sign up on the city website. It's incredibly uplifting. You can't believe, two hours, sorry, okay. But one of the things, every month, every time we pick up trash, there are hundreds of cigarette butts. And I have to say, I've become kind of an expert on this. And you know where they are? They're at bus stops. And they're at places where people stop and wait for something. And then you know what? I was thinking, if I were riding the bus and I'm smoking, what am I supposed to do with a cigarette butt when the bus comes? And so two things I would ask. Could we start, I'm a retired teacher in San Mateo, so I always think education is, is where it starts. And when I was a teacher at Sunny Bray, we always had people come talking about keep, keep, keep San Mateo beautiful. Could we start doing educational efforts again? And one idea, I have 30 seconds left, there is this $35 butt receptacle. And if the city would pay for it, we would go and knock on the doors of people, like apartment buildings and stuff nearby, and ask them to empty the butt dispenser. So those are my two. I know you can't do anything right now, but please think about it. Thanks, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. The next speaker is Gerald Moreno, followed by Maureen Kilo, and then Virginia McIsaac.
Madam Mayor and Council, I'm on the same page as the young lady who just spoke a minute ago about trash pickup. And I think that maybe we could have in front, I live 28th and Delaware, not far from the thrift store, and I see trash on the ground, and I like picking it up. It's good exercise. And I think we would be better, I mean, if we had more trash receptacles and then people spinning gum on new sidewalks, because there's a lot of development over there where I live. And it's beautiful. I love this city. I moved here a couple of years back, and there's an issue about the blowers. I think Andrea was the, she was going to turn the blowers into electric, but I think they, that's half of the problem. I think the blowers, they're blowing leaves, they're blowing dicing in Foster City. They're just blowing leaves, and there's dust getting on these cars that are driving by. They're putting trash. In Redwood City, they were notorious for blowing trash from one apartment complex into the street. Now, somebody's got to pick it up. The city? I mean, don't, I mean, they, what about the yard vacs, a rake and a broom? Picking, I mean, I think that that's, she wants to go electric because of the emissions. I believe that we should go no blowers at all. Get a rake and a broom. It's good exercise. I mean, that's what I did. I grew up with it. My mother used to sew the bags for yard vacs. Now, we can develop electric yard vacs. It would be excellent. They'd pick up their own trash. I mean, pick it up and put it in their truck and take it to the dump. But don't blow it in the street. That's counterproductive because somebody's got to pick it up. Cigarette butts, also, she was talking about. I don't like cigarette butts. I sweep them up. On my, in my apartment building, I'll pick them up, sweep them up. If we had trash receptacles and places for people to put their cigarette butts, it'd be more beautiful for this city. I love the city. It is beautiful. Let's keep it beautiful. And if they, we could just get rid of the blowers totally, forget about electric or the battery-powered blowers, I know still makes them, but then why can't they buy an electric yard vac or a broom and a rake and a trash can? That's my pet peeve, I guess. And I was at the city council meeting in, in Redwood City when I was living there. And I told, I asked them also, don't, when, because they were blowing trash in the street. The city mowed the lawn in front of the apartment complex, and there was nothing but trash. They mowed up the lawn with the trash. So then I, I went to the council meeting and they, I think they cleaned, or I called the Public Works, and they cleaned it all up. The city came and they were that quick, that same day. By the time I got off work, 5 o'clock, all that trash was cleaned up. I made a phone call from work. So anyway, if we could keep this city beautiful somehow and not even just ban the blowers, and we could take it to the voters if possible, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maureen Kilo, followed by Virginia McIsaac, and then Owen Day.
I am disturbed and alarmed by what's been coming out about our mayor. And I stand with the speakers tonight to say that we must insist on honest, accountable city officials who sincerely care about the citizens and our city. So I ask you, Mayor Lee, that you should step down, do, do what's right, do the right thing. When we make a mistake, we make amends. And I ask the city council, I urge you, to do what's right, that we must not allow this kind of, these kinds of actions to go on. We, we've, we've got to just stay with, with what's right.
Thank you. Next speaker is Virginia McIsaac, followed by Owen Day, and then Chris Rousseau.
Thank you, Council. Mayor, I did not need to hear from the district attorney that there was no merit in your challenges. I have been with, working with Chris, with, sorry, with Cliff Robbins for over 20 years. He is the most ethical man that I can say that is my friend. And he did not even ask any of his neighborhood, and he was on our Board of Directors previously, to support him in his quest to take the fifth council seat. To have you impinge upon his reputation is unforgivable. And you should be ashamed. And I hope that the council will take that under consideration and do the right thing and ask you to step down. Thank you.
Next speaker is Owen Day, followed by Chris Rousseau, and then Nancy Schneider.
Good evening, members of council. Owen Day.
Owen Day, speaking here tonight on the topic that many people are. I think there are a few important things to acknowledge when we go about talking about the actions that Mayor Lee took in December. If you actually read the articles and the investigation, and instead of stopping at the headline that says Mayor Lee's accusations hold no water, you see that her statements were corroborated. You see that the DA found while there was no criminal activity, there was, and I think some people in the audience today would appreciate this, an ethical violation that went on in December. Members, influential members of the Democratic Party reached out to Mayor Lee saying, oh, I've confirmed with Cliff that he will vote for you for mayor if you vote for him for city council member. That was confirmed. So I think it's important to take that into account. In addition, I think that there is the other thing to take into account, that this is not about ethics. This is not about anything other than politics and political disagreements. The recall website, and the Love San Mateo website, and the other recall website for Rick and Rick Bonilla, former mayor, and Emmerans Lee, were registered in October of 2022, before any of this took place. This was always their backup plan if they did not win District 5. And I think it's important to recognize that. In other, some other things to acknowledge as well, ethics San Mateo leader Dave Cohen says he does not endorse the recall, yet he was very active in showing up at a recall event a couple of months ago, and was very engaged with members of the public in support of it. I think that's important to recognize. And the last thing I want to say is, none of this would have happened, none of these, none of this would have happened if the two council members in December did not hijack our city's process and instead followed the charter, because the charter lays out a process so that mayoral representation is not held hostage. So I think it's just important to recognize all of these things when discussing this, because while they are talking about ethics, and while they are talking about lies, the real misinformation is coming from members that are trying to recall Mayor Lee. Mayor Lee, I thank you for the work you've done. I thank you for the work you continue to do, and I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Chris Brusonan, and then followed by Nancy Schneider, and then we'll move to remote speakers. So, four different speakers.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mayor Lee. You know, in 1950, Joseph McCarthy dramatically waved a piece of paper up in the air on camera multiple times, claiming this vast conspiracy of communists that infiltrated the State Department. It was all lies, of course. Sadly, in 2022, we got to witness this again with literally exactly the same behavior from Emmerans Lee. Just astounding. Of course, that was lies too. And there's a long litany of other things that have happened, but that's not what's important. What's important is, this is unacceptable. That behavior, behavior only, by the way, resulted in the character assassination of a person who was up for an open role. That's not how democracy works. I call on you to resign. Failing that, and I expect that will fail, given your standards of behavior, I call on the council to implement some material effective procedures to deal with these kinds of things and prevent them from happening in the future. I also call on the council to implement things that prevent procedural challenges, like what happened in December, where clearly the procedure was being followed. You know, at the end of the day, I just have to ask, Mayor Lee, have you no sense of decency? It was extremely disappointing behavior, and I just have to ask, have you no sense of decency?
Thank you for your comments.
I'll wait a little bit.
The next speaker is Nancy Schneider.
I'm Nancy Schneider. I'm a longtime resident and homeowner here in San Mateo. I just wanted to say that these people who are calling for Mayor Lee to resign do not speak for me, or many of other people that I know that it couldn't be here. I do not think that Mayor Lee should resign, or be recalled, or taken out of office. She has been rightfully elected council member, and has done much for our city, and has made it a better place for the people that live here. I also agree with everything that Owen said, and please don't think that everyone in San Mateo agrees with the other speakers. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to our remote public comment now. First speaker is Stu Bruins. Please go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon, Council and Mayor. I live at, across the street from 1400 Fashion Island Boulevard, which is a construction project converting offices to biotech. And apparently, for the last four nights, there has been a generator running on, very close to the street, that is showering our neighbors with noise 24/7. I do not understand why this should be allowed to happen. I understand they have applied for some sort of emergency use of a generator, but I would like some consideration given to residents in the area when the city approves something like this without any soundproofing or other considerations of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Richard Neave. Please go ahead.
Richard Neave here from Fiesta Gardens. The recent findings of the San Mateo district attorney related to the accusations that council member Emmerans Lee made about alleged vote trading clearly show that Mayor Lee was untruthful to her fellow council members, city staff, and the residents of San Mateo. Her actions are not without consequence. They directly affected the selection of a fifth council member, cost taxpayers money to investigate, and have undermined everyone's confidence in her integrity as a public official. Her actions should not go without some consequence. I believe we need to hold public elected officials to the highest standards. The city staff and council should hold a transparent investigation into this matter and the motives behind her actions. Any and all necessary actions should be taken to review the ethical code of conduct for council members, and if found to have acted inappropriately, Mayor Lee should either do the right thing or be sanctioned accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Willa Falk.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Willa Falk, and I'm a resident of Harbor Town, and I'm also a member of their Board of Directors. I'm speaking tonight in regards to this unbearable noise coming from a diesel generator that is located at 1400 Fashion Island Boulevard, which is directly across from our community. This generator has been running 24 hours a day for several days, including over the entire weekend, and is located right at the Boulevard. There, being a board member, I have gotten a multitude of calls with complaints and concerns regarding the noise. There are some residents that have called me saying, I'm in my home with my windows double pane closed, and I can't bear the noise. Harbor Town is a quiet and peaceful community, which has been located, located in this area for 44 years. Although we have had a multitude of changes going on around us, our community has always been treated with respect. The latest venture, life science, which is going on all around us, and we want to make sure that this community does not have to endure, endure this constant noise, which is disrupting the quality of life and will affect the values of our homes. I was told that nothing would be put on the outside of the building at 1400 Fashion Island Boulevard, and that all changes would be made inside of the building. This generator needs to be put inside the building or relocated to the back of the building with noise canceling around it. We are not an industrial area, and for our safety, I also hope that nothing more than Level 2 with life science is part of the 1400 Fashion Island Boulevard project. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dan Schonberg.
Hello, my name is Dan Schonberg. I've been a resident of the central neighborhood for six years now, and I resided to San Mateo for 10. I called to speak in about Mayor Emmerans Lee. I find the discourse tonight to be very disturbing. Much of the accusations of dishonesty feel dishonest in of themselves. People are confusing the absence of evidence as an evidence of absence. That is not a decision to be taken lightly. In fact, I find, I suspect all this is related to arguments over housing policy. If anything, I would describe this as, the fighting is so intense because the stakes are so low. The rate of change, the rate of housing is, the rate of change to San Mateo is so low that most of us won't see it, won't materially be impacted by it. If anything, settle down, slow down, the fight, this fight doesn't need to be so intense. This fight is not, the stakes are so low. I've been very pleased with the performance of the mayor so far. I've been pleased with the council as a whole. San Mateo is a great place to live, and I am pleased overall. I, what I wish to see is to see a neighborhood association that purports to represent me to be one to include my voice. If anything, the dishonesty is in the way that the city, the neighborhood association represent themselves, and the way they purport to speak for me, when in fact, they've never asked my voice in anything. I wish to see that this, the city move on from this discourse of whether or not to recall, because I don't find it productive, I don't find it helpful. I find it solely an escalation of a fight that doesn't provide value and doesn't move us forward in any meaningful way. It's mostly just people digging in and taking their own sides. Thank you.
Thank you. The next, sorry, the next speaker is Chris Cavielli.
Yes, hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, hi. So this is also for Emmerans. I don't know if you remember me, Emmerans, but we were in a tech group meeting together where we picked Constella for the parent-teacher communication app many years ago, and I was at your house. And I was surprised to hear all these evidences of misdeeds being exposed. And as a reminder, I want to remind you and everybody in government that you report to us, because we're the, we are, we the people. And the Bible says that lying is a sin, and the Bible says that God will judge everyone. So we don't have to worry about judging, because God will do that. Nobody escapes that. The Bible also says that we should love our neighbors. And one of the things I learned about loving our neighbors is we have to love everybody, including you. And, you know, if someone has to spend eternity in the wrong place and be tortured 24/7 for eternity, and a reminder that eternity is actually quite a long time, I wouldn't wish that on anybody. So there is a solution. The solution is to repent. And I think it sounds like, you know, an honest repentance, honest transparency, resign. You don't have to go through the whole recall process, that's just going to be painful, but that will, will have to happen if that's what has to happen. But I rather that you just repent and resign and do the right thing, because that's what righteousness is. So, again, I don't hate you. I want to see you spend the right, eternity in the right place, not in the wrong place. So please repent and do the right thing. Thank you very much, Emmerans.
Thank you. The next speaker is Vigius Maturi. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm, my name is Akos Maturi. I'm a resident of San Mateo, and I've lived here for several years now. I had a comment prepared, but I'm going to move in a different direction based on the last few comments. Something that I feel like this community has moved away from in this public comment is actually being concerned with making the lives of the people living in this community meaningfully better. When I hear, see the amount of effort being put into this kind of attack on elected officials in a situation that has so much lack of clarity, so much uncertainty, it really saddens me. I feel sad to see these members of the community that I live in spend their time and waste their time on things that don't matter. And instead, instead of actually putting their time toward making this a place that people want to live, and more importantly, making it a place that all people, regardless of the background that they're born into, what race they are, what income they have, can actually afford to live and be with their families in peace and prosperity. I just also want to name that someone just commented and essentially accused the mayor of going to hell, which is one of the most deranged things I've ever heard in public comment, and one of the most awful things I've heard in a public comment. I think that people who are here accusing other people of this, this kind of, accusing people of this, should be really concerned with themselves and take a deep look at who they are and what they want for this community. Because from my vantage point, as a young person who wants to make San Mateo a better place, I'm pretty disgusted. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is John Brook.
Good evening, members of the mayor city, of the mayor and the city council. My name is John Brook. I've lived in the city of San Mateo for 30 years. I would like to express my support for those individuals who have doubts about Mayor Lee's ethical behavior, and I hope that Mayor Lee will do better in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Karen Mon. Please go ahead, Karen.
Yes, I'd like to preface my remarks by thanking the members of the council for appointing me to the Major S Oversight Committee. I'm sorry I'm not with you in person tonight, but very much appreciate that appointment. I'm, I'm speaking on the, I'm speaking for neighbors here at the Harbor Town homeowners' area about the generator that suddenly appeared at 1400 Fashion Island Boulevard. Our neighborhood is not anti-development, nor is it anti-biotech. We've worked extremely successfully with Windy Hill Development, who is developers who are developing a building in much the same fashion directly across the street on Mariner's Island Boulevard. They have made concessions about noise impacts, mechanical support enclosures, truck circulation and deliveries, and so forth. This generator has created unbearable noise for many of our residents, and these are not people who are overly noise sensitive. These are people who are accustomed to the traffic along Fashion Island Boulevard. We know that, that noise exists, but this has been something that there's been no outreach from the developer, there's been no outreach from city staff. And if this type of development is going to continue in this part of the city, or any part of the city, I strongly recommend that the city council have a study session to look at the changing world that incorporating life science businesses into our community means for us all, and that the city council develop policy guidelines for city staff who apparently told the developer that they were welcome, or that there, there was no objection to, or nothing that prohibited them from putting this generator where they put it, and the type of generator that it is. We asked that the city council develop some policy guidelines relating to placement of generators, vending systems, construction impacts, and safety impacts that biotech or life science businesses are bringing into our community. We also asked that this particular developer be asked to immediately desist with the generator or take it, generator use, or take mitigation steps to reduce the noise level that is severely impacting our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jordan Grimes, followed by our last speaker is Joyce. Four additional people have raised their hands. Council had determined that Joyce would be the last speaker in our remote environment. So, Jordan Grimes, please go ahead, then we'll have Joyce.
Good evening, Council, Honorable Mayor. It is shameful, though entirely predictable, to see that the recall supporters continue to misrepresent, twist, and obfuscate facts. twist and obfuscate facts in service of their goal of returning the city to a place where backroom politics rubs the table. Where the most affluent and powerful in the city, those with ideas from yesteryear about what the city should look like and who should be allowed to live here, control and guide it unencumbered. That the district attorney was not able to prove the mayor's allegations is utterly meaningless. An inability to prove something happened does not mean it did not happen. In this instance specifically, it speaks only to the political savvy of those trying to tip the scales in the first place. Claims of lies on the part of the mayor are pure projection on the part of the recallers themselves. For decades, San Mateo has been run politically by what is essentially the proverbially smoke-filled back room composed of the city's elite. Leadership of the San Mateo United Homers Association, the Realtors and other moneyed interests and local political power brokers. They have done as the city, they have done with the city as they pleased. That is now in jeopardy. Despite the recallers' claims, there is no broad coalition calling for the mayor's ouster. What there is is a vocal minority, cacophony of angry homeowners, disproportionately white, disproportionately wealthy, disproportionately older than the city at large, who see efforts to pursue things like affordable housing, climate change adaptation and social and racial equity as a direct threat to their power. That is what this is really about. These are the same voices we have heard over and over, year after year, articulating a vision for this city that freezes it in amber, preserving it as a retirement community for the rich and nostalgic. Mayor Lee stands opposed to that vision. Her own and that of the tens of thousands of San Mateans who voted for her is one of progress and inclusion. With or without her, that vision will, will win out.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joyce.
Thank you for listening to my concerns. Three of the previous callers have expressed the concern about the generators at 1400 to 1450 Fashion Island Boulevard. And in particular, it's the Genesis Building. And I just can't understand how the city could have allowed that generator to be placed in the front of the building when the perfect spot would have been behind the building, parallel to 92. And like the other callers mentioned, it was 24/7 noise from Thursday to Monday morning, almost impossible to sleep. And my real concern is the summertime with the windows open. How are we ever going to be able to sleep and live in peace? So thank you for listening and I hope the city will do something about this.
Thank you. We have no more speakers.
Thank you. With that, we will close public comment and we will move on to our next agenda item, the study session. Item number 24, I'd like to ask our deputy community development director Zach Dahl and Diana Elrod, our consultant, to present on the adopted 2023 to 202031 housing element.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Zach Redall, Deputy Director with the city's Community Development Direct Department. And I'm joined by the city's housing consultant Diana Elrod. I'm here tonight to provide an update to the council on the recently received comment letter from the State Department of Housing and Community Development on the city's recently adopted local housing element. And provide an overview of next steps and potential ways to address these comments that were raised. Before we start, I do want to acknowledge the housing element team that is supporting the production of the housing element. That includes our various staff members in the Community Development Department as well as our consultant team. For tonight's agenda, we'll provide a little bit of background on our housing element and its timeline to get us to this evening. The comment letter that was provided by the state as well as potential ways that we could address those comments and a timeline and next steps for moving forward. Following the presentation, our team will be available for any questions the council may have. Then we'll move to public comments and then council discussion and direction. And our objectives for this evening are to receive an overview and additional information on the status of our housing element, receive public comments and then receive direction on how best to proceed. So first, starting with background on our housing elements, it is a required element within our general plan. It does require certification by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. And we are planning for the sixth housing cycle, which started this year and runs through 2031. Overall, the regional housing needs allocation that was assigned to the larger Bay Area region was a little over 440,000 units, of which 715 units were assigned to the city of San Mateo. As noted, the housing element is one of eight chapters in our general plan and it is the only element that does require state certification. Generally, a general plan is comprehensively updated every 20 years or so and plans for the next 20-year horizon. However, for a housing element, it is updated every eight years to align with statewide, the statewide housing cycles. And we're currently planning for our sixth housing cycle. This is a breakdown of those 7,015 units that were assigned to the city of San Mateo. They are spread over four income categories, above moderate or market rate. And then three different levels of affordable units to address those that earn various, then they're tied to various levels of area median income. And then the lower row shows under our locally adopted housing element, our estimated housing production over this cycle. Overall, we did identify capacity for a little under 10,000 housing units, which represented meeting our allocation plus a 40% buffer. And then we did identify opportunities to meet or exceed all of the income categories. The preparation of the housing element started in 2020, where the housing element team began work on the background information and, and assembling the information to begin creating the sites inventory. And that included assessment of sites around the city and adopting the methodology that we would evaluate each site under. We also began work with the Regional Planning Collaborative for San Mateo County 21 Elements. This also helped establish background approach to align all San Mateo communities. And then also assisted in early community outreach and public workshops. Moving into 2021, we continued preparation of the draft housing element. And in the summer and fall of 2021, conducted extensive public outreach and community engagement to receive input and community feedback on what should go into the housing element. Beginning of 2022, we held a joint city council and planning commission study session to go over various aspects of the housing element and receive additional direction on specific programs, policies and goals that should go into the housing element. Based on that information, we completed preparation of the draft housing element and published it beginning of April. And that initiated a 30-day public comment period. At the end of the public comment period, we held two public hearings before our planning commission to receive input and direction. And then in May, we took the, the draft housing element to city council for input and direction. And then based on that, we submitted our updated draft to the state beginning of July. Three months later, we did receive our first review letter from state HCD. And then that initiated our, our, our most recent update to the housing element. We brought the, the review letter to council in November and based on that direction, we worked to update the housing element and publish it at the end of December. Based on the timing that was available and state statute requirements for an adopted housing element by the end of January, we proceeded with public hearings before our planning commission and then our city council, where we were ultimately adopted on January 24th. And then we subsequently submitted to the state. And then most recently, we did receive a second review letter from the state, which identified additional areas that needed to be addressed in order to achieve certification. Along with that adoption that council made at the end of January, we did include local adoption findings. These findings articulated how the housing element addressed all applicable items and areas of state law, as well as how we had updated the housing element to address the, the comments provided by HCD in their first letter. And all of that was documented in the resolution that accompanied the adoption of that housing, of the housing element. And so as noted, at the end of March, we did receive our second review letter from, from the state. It did include 36 comments requesting additional evaluation, analysis and or information. And we do want to note that we, our first letter had 92 comments, so this does indicate meaningful progress in, in achieving certification. And we do also want to note, this is a similar situation to many of the jurisdictions around the Bay Area, where multiple rounds of review are required before certification can be achieved. And so with our agenda report that was provided in your packet, we did include a matrix that broke down the individual comments and then outlined a potential city response or recommended staff response for each of those comments. And while there are a variety of comments that, that cover the housing element, there are five areas where most of the comments fell into. Most notably, they did provide additional comments on, on how the city should address major Y as a housing constraint. Additional information with regards to our sites inventory. Additional clarification on how we're estimating EDU production. Clarification of how our infrastructure will meet the needs of this additional housing and additional information on addressing affirmatively furthering fair housing requirements. So starting with HCD's comment on major Y, they did include additional comments about including specific commitments and, and enhanced elements to how we will address the constraint that is major Y and how it, how it could constrain housing production. Staff's recommended response to HCD's comments would be to be more explicit in our commitment to completing the general plan update process and placing an updated major Y initiative on the 2024 ballot. And then identifying potentially minimums with regard to additional capacity that could be added under that ballot initiative. And then additional density and height that could be added. And I, I think the key here is identifying minimums based on where we already are with our cities with the general plan update, which is about a year behind where our housing element is. So we still allow for that larger community conversation about the appropriate thresholds and the appropriate amounts of housing production that should be planned for over the general plan updates 20-year horizon. And so based on where our housing element is in terms of meeting arena for this cycle and where our general plan update is, which is planning for two and a half arena cycles, there appears to be an opportunity to make minimum commitments that would still allow for plenty of flexibility to continue that discussion as part of the general plan update. So moving along to the sites inventory, there were a number of comments in, in the state's letter that touched on various aspects of the sites inventory. Starting with this over, the overall site analysis needing, needing to be more, more detailed. Additional information on how we establish realistic capacity. How we evaluated non-vacant sites and ensuring that those uses would not be barriers to new housing production. And then additional information on our sites inventory, meeting all AFFH requirements. And so on this, to address these issues, we have a number of specific slides, but overall we are recommending an investigation of three additional programs or policies to address these concerns. That includes establishing a housing overlay for quasi-public sites that could include church or school sites. Doing a revision or revisit to the sites inventory to look at additional housing capacity on the current sites, as well as looking for other opportunities that, for other sites that could be added. And then also exploring a, an affordable housing overlay and how additional housing production could be generated under an approach like that. And so I do want to note that, given that we have not had a significant amount of time from receiving the letter to being before you this evening, these are, we're still in the early stages of evaluating these. And so our recommend, our recommendation is that we would come back at a later date to provide additional information and receive confirmation from council before moving forward and including these in an updated housing element. So with regard to the housing overlay on, on quasi-public sites, we have identified 80 sites around the city that are over a quarter acre. And based on those, and these sites range from church sites, publicly owned sites, nonprofit institutions and, and public and private schools. Low-end capacity identified is that we could add 250 to 300 units of housing capacity, primarily affordable, based on this type of overlay approach. And we are currently in the process of mapping and refining these sites. And so this would be an option where we would bring back additional information at a later date. But we are looking for input from the council on if this is approach that you're interested in. Similarly, with regards to our sites inventory, we are going to look at a number of different ways where we could evaluate the capacity on a number of these sites. And that could be identifying underutilized sites where additional capacity could be accounted for within the current general plan. Also approaching potential developers and property owners to verify commitment and or identify new, new property owners and developer site commitments. And then also based on the state's comments about our two large sites over 10 acres. This is the Hillsdale Mall and the Bridgepoint Shopping Center. We will need to adjust down our housing assumptions, particularly our affordable housing assumptions. And so this is triggering the need to identify new housing opportunities to ensure that we can meet each of our affordable housing categories. And then also we are looking at ways that we could identify new sites to add to the sites inventory. This could include sites that we may be initially screened out, but maybe merit a second look. And then also we do have a number of sites where we've heard relatively recent owner interest and that these could merit addition to the sites inventory. And then along with this, also evaluating opportunities where sites are underutilized and those could also be sites that get added to our sites inventory. And then the third option would be exploration of an affordable housing overlay zone. As an approach like this would look at large sites within the R1 districts and underutilized sites in our R2 through our five districts. And this would also be achieved within the current limitations of our general plan and measure Y, but has the potential to generate up to 1,000 units of additional housing capacity within our sites inventory. And then we need to evaluate of those thousand, how many could be identified as potential low-income units to meet our three low-income categories. And as part of that, to incentivize housing production, especially on underutilized sites, we would look at ways to streamline the development review process and then reduce development standards to incentivize as well. And so for all three of those approaches, we would be looking to come back with more details, but are looking for initial input from council on if those are approaches that, that could be supported. With regard to accessory dwelling units, we, they did, there was some comments about additional information on, to justify our production estimates. And then also that we need to monitor affordability of new units to verify they are meeting various low-income categories. So in, in potential responses to those comments include adjusting our ADU projection methodology. We had initially gone with a more conservative approach, but we're recommending moving to an approach that is widely used and included in, and most of the certified housing elements that have happened around the Bay Area. And this looks at allocation based on, on a, a study conducted a few years back that found affordability generally fell over all four income categories as outlined here. And then we would also add a program to our housing element to utilize HCD's affordability true tool to track ADU affordability moving forward. And then we would report in our annual product, annual progress report on our housing element. And to this, we just want to note, our numbers are not that far off. Based on a five-year average, initially we had gone with a four-year average from 2019 to 2022. However, it does However, it does appear that HCD is, has been pushing for inclusion of our twenty eighteen permitting data. So based on a five year production average, we would, we would reduce our estimate of fifty five ADUs annually to fifty three, which would slightly drop our production numbers over eight years down to four hundred and twenty four units. And then based on those four twenty four, we would spread them over the four income categories as outlined on, on the slide here. With regard to infrastructure, this is really a comment that appears to just merit additional clarification because we are looking at achieving our housing numbers within our existing general plan and zoning. And both of our water providers have adopted urban water management plans that outline an approach for providing for the capacity within our current zoning and general plan. And so these comments, we have already provided a meaningful amount of analysis to back this up, but we'll look for ways to further elaborate and clarify. And we also want to note that this is also consistent with housing elements that have been certified. So this is really a matter of, of just providing clarification that we do have the infrastructure and both from our water and sewer providers to meet our, our projected housing production for this upcoming housing cycle. With regard to affirmatively furthering fair housing, I did touch on that on a number of our approaches in the earlier slides. But we will be working with our, our AFFH consultant Root Policy to provide additional information and updated analysis to speak to these comments that were in the HCD comment letter. And then I think as part of our approach with the sites inventory, we will look for additional housing opportunity sites within our highest resource areas. And, and we do see a number of opportunities with the quasi-public affordable overlay, which could include various church and, and school sites. And then, lastly, there were a number of comments related to our constraints analysis. And so we are looking at additional programs and, and the state was also looking at being more specific in our commitments. And so there were, they were looking for additional commitments on how we can streamline our application process. And they did specifically identify our pre-application process. And so one of the things that we see as an opportunity here would be to see if council supports the, the notion of eliminating our pre-application process for housing projects and then folding in the, the applicable community engagement pieces, most notably the neighborhood meeting and then the planning commission study session into our formal application process. So we could still achieve the same level of community engagement while shortening the development review process for housing applications. And I do want to note, this has been something that staff has already been looking at to, to streamline and optimize our development review process. And we've actually identified some benefit to conducting a neighborhood meeting at the beginning of the formal application process because that creates less confusion and, and a shorter time period between that neighborhood meeting, which provides input and direction to a, a development application and the time that then the study session happens and then subsequently the formal public hearing for adoption. And so there's, that actually could create some clarity and understanding within our community when a new development is proposed, where sometimes now we've seen years delay between the neighborhood meeting in the pre-app and then the public hearing associated with that formal development application. The state is also looking for reduced parking commitments on reduced parking requirements. And this is also one where functionally for housing applications, the state has been dictating parking requirements for housing projects. And so for most recent housing projects, we've been approving projects with, on projects that, that had reduced parking standards below those that are currently in our ordinance. And so we'll be coming back with more details, but we see this as a, as, as something that is a pretty straightforward commitment to make to better align our parking requirements with those under, required under state law. And then also, with the city moving forward with objective design standards for housing projects, we see an opportunity to look at, at potentially increasing the, the threat size threshold for when a housing project could be administratively approved by the zoning administrator. Once we have objective design standards, as there will be a much more limited discretionary process for the planning commission. And so that is something we'll come back with later, but we are looking to see if there's council interest in, in increasing that size threshold. Right now, I believe it's, it's six units or more requires a planning commission review. We, we could see an opportunity where maybe that threshold's increased to housing projects that are twenty units or fewer or something along there. So we would be looking for input from council on, is there an appropriate threshold to raise? Where we could then have housing projects approved administratively. And that also aligns with our objective design standards, which would function along those lines anyways, because we're, we're taking the discretion out of the designer view portion as well. In terms of next steps, as noted before, this is an iterative process that we need to go through with the state. And, and we're in the same boat as many other jurisdictions around the Bay Area as we work with HCD to achieve certification. And so right now, based on the second review letter, we are looking for input so we can proceed forward and then provide an updated housing element to engage with HCD on, to get closer to that certification. In terms of our tentative schedule, based on the direction provided this evening, we will work to be, update the housing element and then schedule a follow-up study session with more details on, on the major updates that will go into that housing element. And then based on that, we were targeting resubmission to the, to state HCD in the summer of twenty three. And then that would trigger another sixty day review period. We would also continue to, to work with HCD during that time period. And then if there are any remaining issues, proactively begin working and addressing those so we can expeditiously move towards certification. Once we have achieved conditional certification, we'll then proceed with scheduling public hearings before planning commission and then ultimately come back to council for adoption and then our formal submittal to HCD for certification. So this evening, as outlined, the topics that we are recommending come back to council for a study session include identify, identification of the quasi-public sites for affordable housing, the affordable housing overlay, updates to our sites inventory capacity. This includes both adding capacity with new, new opportunities as well as adjusted capacity on our two large sites over ten acres. Additional information on allowing smaller housing, housing projects to be approved administratively, adjustments to our parking standards, and then anything else that, that you, that the majority of councils interested in, in staff pursuing to address the comments received, contained in our HCD letter. Additionally, we are looking for direction this evening on, on how to move forward with the commitments to address measure Y in response to HCD's comments and the elimination of the pre-app requirement for housing projects. And then again, if there's any other direction that a majority of council would like to see us include as we update our housing element. So with that, that does conclude staff's presentation and we are available if you have any questions.
Thank you so much, Zach. Who would like to start with questions? Council questions? Go ahead, please.
We'll get long enough. Thank you Deputy Director Dahl and your team. Thank you Diana for the, the work that went into this in a very short period of time. Couple of questions, I think, both for council and for the general public, since there's a lot you're asking for in a very short period of time. Could you help explain what exactly a housing overlay, affordable housing overlay is and how it could affect our ability to reach, reach arena goals?
An affordable housing overlay adds on, it overlays an existing zoning and identifies specific characteristics or sites that then could be subject to additional provisions. And so in this case, an affordable housing overlay would identify certain site criteria that then could produce housing. And so then what we would look at is establishing development standards for that housing. And so that's, in this instance, it's quasi-public sites. And then the overlay would establish density, site standards and other requirements if housing was developed on any of those sites. This is just the overlay. We would still go through the development review process for any specific project that then moved forward. And this would require an amendment to our zoning code. So if this is included in our housing element, we would still need to go through the zoning code amendment process. So that would include public hearings before the planning commission and council to amend our zoning code to then allow for this to move forward. So even after this, if this was included in our housing element, there would still be additional public hearings where, where input and feedback could be provided as we move forward. But obviously, there would be a level of commitment in adopting this zoning code amendment, but there's still opportunity to continue to refine requirements and address other concerns if, if they arose.
And these would be specific to certain areas?
Yes, the overlay would identify the areas. And so, and that's something that when we come back to council, we would, we would, we could articulate more specifically where these sites exist around the city.
Okay. And I think certainly incorporating the experience of other cities with these would be very helpful for all of us to understand. The next one. Can you help me understand and all of us, what kind of additional, very rough terms capacity you think we might be able to produce in terms of ADUs by adopting the methodology that HCD and other cities have used versus what you termed our more conservative, original methodology?
We would actually be adjusting downwards slightly our, our annual production targets based on that five year average, which included twenty eighteen. Based on our assessment, we actually identified twenty nineteen through twenty twenty two as being more representative of likely ADU production. So I think what this will do is, is probably create a higher likelihood that we'll be exceeding our ADU production targets over these eight years. But obviously, then that would just help move us closer to achieving arena during this eight year period. And so really, this is more just adjusting our estimates, but it would still be preserving all of the majors that we would then be embarking on to encourage ADU production within the city.
Great, thank you. And when you said you needed to clarify the infrastructure statements, particularly around water, and were the documents from our water agency partners included in our submission where they said, here are our plans and here's how we're going to make sure there's enough water for the growth that's being estimated?
Because we're identifying a path to meet arena within our existing zoning and land use, we were, and, and each of our water providers are required to provide updated urban water management plans every five years based on the housing capacity and a city's adopted general plan and zoning ordinance. We relied on those two pieces of information and the fact that we, we have adopted urban water management plans with each of our water providers and we're not doing any rezonings as part of our housing element. And so we did articulate the, those positions and how that is defensible. And that is an approach that other jurisdictions have used in certified housing elements. So what we would be looking to here is to provide further clarification. As part of our general plan update, which is looking to increase density and, and housing capacity over twenty years, we'll be doing a much more thorough analysis of, of water supply. But in this case, we were relying on, on the each water, each water providers adopted urban water management plans as justification. So I think, and we did have a subsequent discussion with HCD, we're going to look to further articulate. But in terms of additional analysis, there appears limited opportunity and that would seem to go above and beyond what other jurisdictions have been required.
But just show them the proof, right? Even more. Okay. And in terms of the pre-application process, why was that process put in place in the beginning? And you said you were looking at this change potentially before thinking about the, the latest, latest HCD letter. How do you see it improving neighborhood input, community input? Because I know that is certainly one of the areas that's most important, right up front, as you said, and keeping the community engaged throughout the development process.
Um, I'll start with the, the second part first and then maybe, I, I don't have as much background on the origins of our pre, pre-application process. But with, we, at least during my time here over the past two years, we have been looking at ways to improve and optimize our development review process. And, and we have been looking particularly at our pre-app process as, for some projects that had become lengthy. And so we had already implemented changes to shorten the pre-application process down to around three to four months. But we also identified in many cases, we'll have a pre-application process and then a project might go a year, two years before submitting its formal application process and in some cases even longer. And so there was a disconnect where members of the community were asking, we heard about this project, what happened? And then three years later, then they see a notice for a public hearing and they felt like, where, why did it go silent for so, so long? Where was the ongoing engagement? And so if we made an adjustment where we eliminated the pre-app process and moved the neighborhood meeting to taking place before the submission of the formal application and then at that front end of that formal application, there's a study session with the planning commission, the formal application will then continue on. And then six months, nine months, maybe a year later, you have a public, public hearing before the planning commission or the approving body to formally consider that project. There's a more logical and more, a tighter timeline from origination to decision. And so for, for the community, they can understand that process and they can see that it's on, on their radar. So from the time that they became aware, they can see the evolution. And you don't see, see that large period of time where there's, there's no activity on a given project.
Okay. And I think one of the things I'd be most concerned about was making sure that the public was certainly got early input, but throughout the process, if there are any major changes, that there was an opportunity. So that would be something I'd look forward to seeing if you were to come back with that recommendation in the study session.
And ideally for the, for the process when it operates in, in the best fashion, starting with that neighborhood meeting, there's a lot of good input that's provided. And then that informs the application that's submitted. That application then goes to study session. So there is a second opportunity for community input and decision maker input. And then ideally, the project evolves to when it comes back for that formal application. It's reflective or it has addressed the input received earlier on.
Okay, great. Then you said that, that some of the changes you might be recommending in future were consistent with measure Y for this housing element. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. And is there a language that we can learn from other cities who've had their housing element approved or approaches, like you mentioned with the region wide methodology by HCD? Are there other things that we are going to go out and look to do to try and streamline our resubmission?
The answer would be yes and no. We are as each, as we, as housing elements are certified, our team is reviewing those and looking for opportunities where we could apply programs or policies or approaches. But at the same time, we've also received feedback that just because a program or a policy or an approach is in one certified housing element, that doesn't mean that another jurisdiction can rely on it. So that's been a challenge for this housing cycle, is, is you can't rely on previously certified housing elements to ensure that if we did the same thing, we could get ours certified.
Understood. And I share that frustration. And finally, is there any type of deadline that we are looking, that we have to meet as opposed to our desire to do it as quickly as we can while still doing it thoroughly?
Um, I'll, Diana, if you have any thoughts on our timeline at this point?
There is no specific deadline for the city to resubmit to HCD. So the deadline that people talk about a lot of May thirty first is the deadline by which HCD is supposed to certify housing elements. However, because we're still in this sort of back and forth phase with getting, giving them new information and giving us feedback, it, that, that deadline is not, I don't know what the word is, it's, it's not a hard deadline for us. We can take the time we need to, to get this done. So we met the main deadline, which was January thirty first, but to adopt by and send to HCD. That was the primary deadline for the city to make.
Okay, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dahl, in your presentation, you mentioned with regard to measure Y, I, I'd say like introducing some quantitative commitments for growth.
I'd say like introducing some quantitative commitments for growth within the general plan update process. Is that, is that right?
Yeah. So, so right now with the draft land use map that's moving forward in the, in the draft, how general plan that'll be published later this year. We've, I, we're looking at a 20-year growth projection of a little over 21,000 units. There's also within the study areas.
I may have done something accidentally. It just.
Martin, we went, we went dark on the second screen. It's not projecting.
Okay.
I think we just pull it over again, but.
I apologize.
So with regard to the measure Y approach, we would be looking at, at making, the recommendation was based on, on cover, more recent conversation with HCD staff was they're looking for specific commitments. And obviously, measure Y is a voter-approved initiative. And so overall, changing it requires another vote of the people. But what we've identified as a potential opportunity is knowing we are moving forward with a draft general plan that does identify a path for, for a potential modification to measure Y within the study areas that could increase heights and densities and add additional housing production capacity. In this case, based on the most recent direction, heights up to either eight or 10 stories and density of up to 130 or maybe 200 units, depending on where the final decision lies. There could be an opportunity to establish commitments below those, knowing that we'll either be there or higher when the, when there's a general plan that's ready for adoption. And so this would still allow for that community conversation as to where that appropriate threshold, whether it's with updated height limits, density limits, or the overall housing capacity that would be added with the general plan. So you wouldn't necessarily take away that ability to have that iterative discussion, but knowing that if we're looking at right now 21,000 housing units, committing to produce, having a ballot initiative that could create at least 10,000 new housing units, that seems very feasible under any scenario, even if the final land use map was brought down. Similarly, something like saying we'll commit to increasing base densities within the study areas by at least 25 dwelling units per acre. That would go from 50 now to 75. There's still latitude of where that final threshold might be well, meeting that minimum commitment. So that was what we kind of had heard from HCD as being feasible, knowing that we can't make firm commitments on the outcome of measure Y because that's, that'll be the result of an election. So we are thinking, we are recommending that as a potential approach to hopefully address this comment. But obviously, until we resubmit and get final blessing from HCD, we don't know. But this would be our recommended approach. And that's kind of the thinking with these minimum numbers.
Sure. But is it, is the, is the idea here to have these commitments be tied to a ballot measure? Or would these commitments be included whether or not a ballot measure passed?
It would be tied to a ballot measure that we bring forward to the voters. So we're not committing to an outcome because we can't. But we're committing to what would be in the ballot initiative. So I think what we heard was, there was concern that we weren't committal enough in what would be in that ballot initiative. And so what we're identifying here is a potential opportunity where we could be more committal without say, taking away from that community conversation that's ongoing with the general plan update.
Okay. Thank you. But I guess at this point, staff is not recommending including any commitments not tied to the ballot measure related to measure Y or committing to even like, for example, growth that would be measure Y approved. But yeah, I guess that's what I'm getting at.
Yes, we are. I mean, with the overlays that were recommended and some of the other recommendations for how to add capacity to our sites inventory, we are looking for ways to add capacity within the limits of measure Y. We legally don't have the ability to make commitments that go beyond measure Y until there's an updated ballot initiative that is approved.
Right. Okay. Let's see. So with regard to realistic capacity, it appeared to me from the letters we've received that HCD is asking the city for a number of things it claims we don't yet have in our element. But it also appears in the note to give an example on how we could account for them in a way that it would presumably deem compliant. I'm just gonna read off for our benefit here. The, the element could, for example, the element could analyze all development activity in these non-residential zones. How often residential development occurs and adjust residential capacity calculations, policies and programs accordingly. Do we plan to do this? And if not, why not?
So we have done this. And so this was one where it's more, we could potentially better articulate how this information comes together, but we've included data on all projects that the city has approved over the last six years. That includes projects in non-residential zones. We did articulate that we've got a strong case to make that 100% of a realistic capacity is defensible because almost every one of our projects in these zones utilized density bonus and actually achieved densities that were more than 100%. And so our average, I believe, was about 98, 99% of capacity. So for that particular comment, we're looking to maybe better articulate and create a stronger narrative to address that. But our position is that that information is there and we do have a pretty detailed list of past projects, particularly in non-residential zones and the housing that goes along with it. And, and we do articulate in a number of tables in the housing element. We've got a track record of approving projects that exceed our density and in some cases well over 100%.
Okay. With regard to suitability of non-vacant sites. In the matrix, I think staff noted that findings were adopted with the adopted housing element. Apparently to demonstrate that, I guess, like, I feel like that's what, that was staff's response to notes in this vein that seemed to be requesting of us to demonstrate existing uses of non-vacant sites are not an impediment to additional residential development. And will likely discontinue in the next planning period. So I guess I just wanted to ask, you know, where, where are those findings exactly in the housing element?
Those findings, the findings was overall referenced in the resolution and it relies on a lot of the information contained in, I believe it's appendix C, which is our sites inventory. And I think this is another case where we had tried to articulate our approach here and in many cases, what we articulated was that the existing unit uses weren't an impediment because these were underutilized sites. So whether the use remained or not, there was still an opportunity to produce housing on the site. So the example of this is a, maybe a smaller building with a large parking lot where that use in that building could remain and housing's developed on the parking lot. And we've also got examples of projects where uses on a site remain as part of a mixed use project. And so in this case, we had tried to articulate that. So we're looking to more clearly articulate that. And, and also identify, and maybe that's with graphics, let's say Bridge Point is a good example of where we've, there's been comments that we can't assume housing on that site because there's existing uses with long leases, but you, the site is significantly underutilized with large portions that are, that are parking lots. And so you could have those uses remain while redeveloping the parking lots, even with parking there to continue to serve those uses and housing above it. And so in that case, what we're looking to do is better articulate, the uses aren't the impediment because we're not looking at fully developed sites to get redeveloped with housing. We're looking at underutilized sites where housing could be added. And so that's really something that we'll really attempt to better articulate. And if needed, site by site, to try to make that point and identify our project history and what we're trying to accomplish here.
Okay, so Steph is planning to try to add more language and, and and go beyond the findings of that are already present in the adopted housing element toward this end.
Yes, we'll be, our sites inventory in appendix C, as well as the housing element itself, we'll be working to more clearly articulate that and, and provide specific examples to support that position.
Okay. Those are my questions at this time. Thank you.
Thanks a lot. Your presentation tonight was very interesting and we're sort of caught, I think, between what HCD wants and what we can accomplish with measure Y and still pass a general plan. So I was interested in your comment about the ADUs and the affordability. And I saw that in, in the documents that we received. And I don't understand how that can be gauged. Most of the ADUs are for personal use. Some may be rentals. Some are built for aging parents. Some are built for children that really can't afford to get out in the style that they're accustomed from their family home and allowed to live there with some independence. So how in the world would we ever gauge that with, with the, with the state?
I'll start and then Diana, if you want to elaborate on, there was a fairly exhaustive study conducted that surveyed and looked at how these ADUs are utilized. And I think what you highlight is, is a good point is even if rent is not being paid, ADUs are providing housing for a critical segment of our population that in many cases fall into one of those lower income categories, whether it's a family member, a parent, a child. Those are individuals that would still need housing and oftentimes they do qualify into one of those low income categories because of how much they make and because of the cost of housing in the Bay Area. And so that can still be counted, even if you don't have a rental agreement where you have a deed restriction, you're still providing a housing unit for, for an individual or a family that, that meets one of those income criterias. And so that's what that study really provided justification for was looking at, at uses of ADUs around the Bay Area. Who's occupying them? What type of individuals and incomes they earned? And then based on that extrapolated to approximate percentages that could then be applied because it is very hard to explicitly document because the presence, I mean, there's thousands of ADUs out there and it's hard to track those. And I know some smaller jurisdictions do do rentals, annual rental surveys, but that becomes more challenging and resource intensive for larger jurisdictions, but you can utilize other resources to understand occupant characteristics and, and then how that could then meet various income categories.
So what I hear you saying, I think, is based on the way they're generally used, that they may ensure us getting a jump on affordability and below market rate housing.
That is correct because it's, it actually, since the more recent state legislation that's passed, there's been a significant increase in ADU production around the state, around the Bay Area, and that production looks to keep happening. And it seems to be a very effective way to get additional units into single-family neighborhoods.
I believe it's happening here too.
We, we, I mean, as evidenced by the numbers that I showed earlier, we've seen significant increases in production numbers over the past four years.
The one thing I'm concerned about is the overlays. I've been through two projects here that had overlays, one of them very near this building, where there was an outpouring of people against them. They still went through, the council still voted for them. One of them was with Sarah High School and some construction they wanted to do there. And so I'm really concerned about the pushback. We're going to get on that in the R1 neighborhoods. It doesn't take far to look down the peninsula at the fight that happened in Menlo Park over the teacher housing. And that did pass, and I think it passed mainly because it was set aside for teachers. There, it was actually put on the ballot by the people that were against it. So I can see the overlays in R1 neighborhoods as being problematic in passing the general plan. And I would say that this is both getting a housing element is, is passed is also a political issue. How do we get it passed by the voters and how it comes off to the voters? So I would be a little bit careful with the overlay in R1 neighborhoods. Whether I think I'm for it or not, I'm not saying that, but I think politically it's problematic. So, and so I think that's it for me now. I think the other comments have been made and questions have been asked and helpful also.
I don't have much to add. Most of the questions I had written here have been addressed. So thank you and thank you for the presentation. As far as completion of our, our updated plan housing element, you, you put on the slide, I think simply summer of 2023. What, what does that mean? And is it fast enough? And I asked that because on the border of my district and central, just last week, we had a builder that was flirting with the idea of invoking the builder's remedy for a project, project 20. And so what exposure do we have by not having a housing element certified until summer? And what do we define as summer?
I'll provide a quick response to the timing and then refer to our city attorney on, on the other, the other piece of your question. With regard to timing, our, our plan is to move as expeditiously as possible in updating our housing element. I think the key was is providing the ranges because depending on the direction and the specifics of what we need to update, we don't know exactly how long that will take, but I think our, our goal is to move expeditiously, schedule a follow-up study session as soon as we've got the necessary information together. And then based on that direction, as soon as we've got the housing element updated, get it submitted to HCD for, for third review. So ideally that happens in the spring, but we just don't know exactly when we'll be able to achieve it yet.
And before the city attorney speaks, we should also mention that HCD has been very specific about including additional extensive community engagement. So I don't want to shortchange that at all. We want to go back out in a very similar way to what we've done before to get the community involved.
Right. And just briefly building on those comments, I mean, it's a bit of a balancing act because we want the housing element to get certified by HCD as quickly as possible. We also want robust community engagement too. So it's a bit of a challenge to do both. But then for the period of time where we don't have a certified housing element, you know, there, there is sort of an element of risk that's involved. I mean, you know, we, we've adopted the housing element with supporting findings where we concluded that it is in substantial compliance with the housing element law. But the longer this process goes on, then the more interest may crop up from developers who are interested in exploring that kind of builder's remedy. So I think the quicker we get it certified clearly, the better.
Thank you. I think the only other question I had was in regards to infrastructure. I think you made a comment to, along the lines of the fact that we believe that our housing element supports that we have the infrastructure. And I just wanted to question specifically electricity. You know, as we're migrating away from gas, natural gas and more exclusively to electricity, and we're pushing electric cars in the next 10 years, do we, do we, do we, do we feel confident that our infrastructure will support it? And, and what are the, what concerns, if any, are there in terms of electrical usage for the city?
I think some of that is kind of outside my range of expertise. I know is, it kind of has been addressed as part of the reach code conversations, but everything that we've seen and received from our provider, Pacific Gas and Electric, PG&E, is that they do have the infrastructure capacity and that they are upgrading and augmenting as needed to support housing capacity as it comes online.
That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I, just to dovetail on what Councilmember Newsom was speaking about in regards to the timeline and exposure, I, I think that all of us here have a concern for preserving, you know, local land use control and funding eligibility. And so I did, you know, I did want to better understand what, what are some of the estate funding grants that are currently being utilized? Until what point would, would a, you know, expiration or a timeline come into effect where we would become ineligible to apply or receive those grants? Can anyone speak to that, please?
And so I know you asked that question earlier, and we did talk a little bit about the PLHA grants, which we do have some projects that are currently funded through there. And we have our allocations approved for this year. And so for the 2023 calendar year, our funding streams are already in place and they're already approved to move forward. And so assuming we get our certified housing element this year, we are okay for 2024, it would be in, in question. And so if we were to apply for new funding without a certified housing element, that would be a question that we would have to look at and answer. And for new money that we're going to be subject to approval in 2024, if we did not have a certified housing element, then we would have to look at that question.
Okay, thank you. And so for, for example, public-private partnerships to develop our own city land, for example, like Kiku Crossing, which leveraged significant amount of state funding, there is a project that we are looking at with Talbets and the redevelopment of the Talbot site. And so, you know, would, would this, you know, X factor unknown in 2024 potentially impact that project?
If we did not have a certified housing element at the time when those funding streams were looking at.
Okay, thank you. And let's see. So just to better understand in terms of the timeline, you know, I, I also appreciate the tension between wanting to do our due diligence and the incredible amount of research that's involved and the added efforts to seek public, you know, input, and also the, the time pressure that we all can recognize in wanting to get certification as quickly as possible. If there's a, a chance that we end up going through another round of comments, how would that impact the projected timeline that, that was presented tonight?
A lot of it really depends on subsequent comments. I, I think all we can do is, is work as expeditiously as we can to move forward and then continue to outreach and engage with HCD when we can to understand where they're at and, and to continue to try to identify what is that path that they see for us to achieve certification and then do everything we can to go down that path and put, update our housing element accordingly. So it's really hard to project out. I, I think our goal is, is that our next round would produce a housing element that can achieve certification.
But, but technically we won't be getting any comments back, official comments back until we submit. Is that, is that true? Or when you say engage HCD, will you expect input along the way?
Some jurisdictions have been able to have iterative conversations with HCD as of yet. Our primary engagement with them has been through submittal and then the comment letter. So at this point, that is our approach. But if there's other opportunities, we would take advantage of them.
Okay, thank you. So I guess I, I would like just to better understand sort of the, how we're defining the idea or the concept of an overlay versus the approach to the sort of quasi-public properties opportunity. And so I, or, so I guess I, I'm not totally sure if we're talking about something that's a zone-specific or a site-specific approach. And so I, I think I would just appreciate a little bit more clarification.
So the, the overlay functions, it, it does identify specific sites, but it doesn't rezone those sites. It adds a layer to the identified sites and then provides the criteria for if those sites want to develop housing, what are the standards, what are the densities, what are the applicable requirements that they would need to meet? So the overlay does go through, it usually either within certain zones or sites specifically identifies the sites that could utilize this overlay.
I see. Okay. So it is essentially a citywide analysis that would hone in on specific sites and the, and then the zone would apply to those sites. Is that, is that capturing what we're saying?
The, the overlay would apply. So the overlay and you, a site would need to either have been identified or meet the criteria within the overlay to then utilize that, that process for moving forward with a housing project.
Right. Okay. So the overlay zone, yes. Okay, thank you. And then would you mind just elaborating more on the ways that you would approach the, the specific suggestion here to be more explicit in the commitment to complete the general plan update process and put it in updated Measure Y initiative on the 2024 ballot measure? So what, in what way would you be more specific? And what do, what in by your estimation or understanding, like what, what was unspecific? What were, what are we trying to address and solve in this case?
With the adopt, the locally adopted housing element that we currently have, we had attempted to be specific in our commitments, recognizing that you can't make commitments about the outcome of a ballot initiative. And so that, in the comment that came back most recently from HCD, that wasn't enough. And so what we're articulating, our paths forward to be more specific, recognizing that there's only, we, we can't commit to an outcome for this particular endeavor. And we do have a process outlined and we were hoping that HCD would recognize what we are working to achieve under the general plan update process that we've been at for four years. And we do have a target for when we will bring an updated ballot initiative to the voters, but we also want to be respectful of the process that's undergoing and that community dialogue. So what we're trying to do with this recommendation here is be more committal without undermining the process and the dialogue that's taking place as part of the general plan update.
Okay. And then my last question is, is, I think it's been stated and we'll restate again, that, that all of the proposed options are Measure Y compliant, correct? But some of them may require SEQA analysis. Is that also possible?
Potentially. And that, and we'll need to evaluate for that as we, as we develop more details on exactly what we would accomplish under each of these. And then subsequently, anything that's outlined in the housing element as we move forward with those individual policies and implement them, we'll be doing more specific SEQA analysis. You do kind of a program, programmatic level of SEQA analysis for the housing element document. And then as each initiative or policy implementation moves forward, we would then do subsequent SEQA analysis at that point to determine if there's any other more specific effects that could occur.
Great. And then can you, I, I actually do have one more question. Can you speak to what are some of the upcoming community engagement opportunities? So, you know, there's still maybe communities members who want to weigh in on, on the housing element programs and, you know, ideas. So I'm curious, in what format and timeline will those, those opportunities present themselves?
Members of the community at any point can submit written comments to the housing team on the housing element website. And then once, and these, these public meetings or study sessions are also a forum, forum to collect community input. Once we have updated the housing element per council's direction, we will then publish that and do outreach to ensure the community is aware of that and will have it available for at least seven days for public comment per, per state requirements. And then at the end of that public review period, we will review all of those comments and update as necessary to address any comments that were provided. And the housing element team is always available to engage with specific community members if you have questions or need further clarification as well.
Okay, thank you. So if, does any council member have any, okay, council member hedges?
To begin with, I really like your idea about including the neighborhood meeting in the actual application. I've seen this over and over again. We've got two projects now where we had neighborhood meetings. They're fairly large projects and all of a sudden nothing's happened. And so anytime we can cut that down, the time, I think it makes us better off with HCD and I think with the community too, because I have people constantly asking me what's going on with this or that. We haven't heard anything.
Pardon me, are you, are you asking additional questions? Or because if not, then we cannot, we can open up for a public comment and then come back for our council direction.
Yeah, that's okay. Whatever you want to do. You're the mayor.
Okay, so this is the time for any last questions? Yes. Okay, one more.
I'll be quick. Zach, when I read the, the notes from HCD about Measure Y, I, you know, I got the impression that maybe in addition to what has been discussed about wanting to be explicit about the, the ballot measure, that there was also a need to have some sort of Plan B if the ballot measure were to fail. Did, did you get that impression as well? Or is that how you, did you, is that, is that, in, in your opinion, is that a part of what the staff in the city need to address?
I, it's a challenge because of, of the nature of this constraint and the comments that they provided. So what we're doing is trying to best interpret the path forward and outline a path that ideally is successful. I mean, the Plan B would do, produce housing as best we can within the limits of Measure Y, because if it fails, Measure Y would continue to be on the requirements we need to abide by until 2030, when it sunsets.
Right. And for ADUs, just to clarifying hopefully question, maybe if we were able to go back to the slide that discusses next steps related to those, for the review, would there be, would there be a review of the affordability of the units that have been constructed? Yeah, it looks like there might be. Even in that previous slide, I think you had a, or maybe, yeah, yeah. Had a program to utilize the tool to track ADU affordability.
There's larger efforts going, going on that are looking at ways to track affordability more precisely. And we do include a program in our ADU policy that does talk about working with our regional collaborative partner 21 elements to find ways that we could track within the county of San Mateo, because I think this is, this is a challenge that all jurisdictions are looking to, to better accomplish and track. And so I think working with our regional partners on, on how we could better understand how ADUs are utilized and, and the rent, the affordability that each of those meet, but we're still looking at how best to do that because there, there's a lot of challenges with that and depending on how precise you want to be.
Okay, no further questions.
I think every project with housing or mixed use with housing that's come forward, in my near memory, is coming forward with density bonus from the state. And people are asking, isn't that going to help us with the general plan and the housing element? Can you tell us why that's not helping us?
Based on HCD guidance, the city can't take credit for any units that are achieved utilizing density bonus or other state laws. So that's the other piece here is with our sites inventory and based on the project track record for the last six years, just about every project that has housing has utilized density bonus and as such has exceeded our density in many cases by over 100%. So that's the other thing is our, these numbers are conservative and realistically, as these sites develop, they will achieve more units than have been assigned within the sites inventory.
Okay, we're ready to open it up for public comment. Okay, Ted McKinnon? One in-person speaker, and I have one hand raised on the Zoom call. If you intend to comment on this item, please raise your hand now.
Good evening, Council Honorable Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name's Ted McKinnon. I'm 24-year resident of District Five. Excuse me. The March 27th, 2023 letter to San Mateo from HCD states, and I'm paraphrasing a little bit. The element to increase densities should include a specific program to address the constraint of Measure Y. Tonight's agenda report responds to this by citing the potential for a ballot initiative for November 2024, something that it made abundantly clear already in the self-certified draft elements submitted to HCD on January 30th. It's as if the city is saying to HCD, didn't they hear us? We're already taking care of that. But perhaps it's us, the city of San Mateo, who aren't properly hearing HCD. A truly actionable program committed to increasing densities would take into account the possibility of failure to overturn Measure Y. Such a consideration would necessarily bring in the alternative path of rezoning enough of our currently R1 zone land to achieve compliance. Doing this would drive a final decision by enabling the hard discussions in terms of the fixed choice, time-dependent framework that it must, and I believe ultimately will have to take. In other words, it would become an actual, realistic program. I think this is what HCD is telling us and it behooves us to listen and respond proactively. Every California city currently without a compliant housing element has faced its own unique challenges and has its own unique opportunities. Let's not fall into the trap of grading ourselves on a curve when we have it in our power to get ahead of this. Let's instead, let's instead face the challenges head-on and move on to honor our commitment to making the best possible San Mateo for its people present and future. Thank you.
Thank you. We have five hands raised in the Zoom call. The first speaker will be Michael. Michael, please unmute yourself. Michael? Okay, I will try again for you, Michael. We'll go to the other Michael. Michael Winehour, please unmute yourself.
There you go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I was scared that you were talking about me before and I was frantically pushing buttons. So evening, members of the council. First of all, I think based upon some comments on the, in the general public comment that insinuated that I was speaking on behalf of Central Neighborhood, I want to be very clear that if I am, I will say as much. And I am not. I'm speaking on behalf of myself or, you know, potentially a different group. So I'm speaking on behalf of myself. First of all, you know, the HCD is not something that should be revered or, or whatever. It's a, it's a bureaucracy in Sacramento that has way too much power and needs to be challenged. It's a it's a bureaucracy in Sacramento that has way too much power and needs to be challenged. And we are making great strides. The city has spent millions of dollars, done tons of outreach, great work by staff, input from the community. And we've submitted a plan that will work. The then I think will ultimately be, you know, certified and will not expose us to the builder's remedy. Thankfully. What we do need are city representatives who who don't try to tank it, which you took an oath to support the city, to defend the constitution of the state of California, et cetera, et cetera. But basically to act in the best interests of San Mateo. And anyone out there, Commissioners Patel and Nugent and and anyone who's out there trying to get the HCD and pointing out the flaws and getting them to tank it is not acting in the best interests of San Mateans. And first of all, you got to knock it off. And the last thing I'll say is about measure Y. The measure Y is not an impediment to housing. Measure Y is a check on developer influence on development in San Mateo and insurance that there's that the voters have a voice. So what we need to do, and I again laud council member hedges for making some great, you know, attempts to find a compromise. We should all be a little disappointed if this is done right, right? For making a great compromise, eliminating H2. And then we'll take that to the voters and you can replace Y. And the people behind Y, myself included, will not put up a fight. If you continue to follow the the Yimby playbook and these, you know, the screeching whatever of scorched earth, no compromise, then you're going to have a problem. So get to the table, learn to compromise, find a middle ground. We can do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's try Michael with no last name again. Michael, if you want to unmute yourself. Okay, I'm going to move along to Gordon Jordan Grimes.
Good evening again, Council Honorable Mayor. Just want to be very clear about something. San Mateo does not have a compliant housing element right now. The last time our previous city attorney gambled with state law, we lost, and it cost us nearly a million dollars in attorney's fees. Should we deny a builder's remedy that project that comes in right now? We will be subject to that same litigation. We will lose again. So I would respectfully request that should that happen, you not gamble with a million dollars of taxpayers' money. Moving on to the actual element itself. Really, there's nothing I heard here tonight that inspired any sort of confidence in me that we aren't going to have to go 15 rounds with HCD. It really doesn't appear that staff has gotten the message from HCD, from advocates, from planning commissioners about what constitutes a compliant housing element and what doesn't. That's really unfortunate, but it is what it is. As far as the element itself, we need to take Bridgepoint off the site's inventory. I I know that our deputy committee development director believes that the parking lots will be redeveloped. HCD has pretty clearly spelled out that there is no reasonable belief for that development. Benihana and Nordstrom Rack are going in. You have a site that is almost entirely comprised of long-term leaseholders and national credit tenants who will not vacate before the end of the planning period. We need to get serious about Bridgepoint. On Hillsdale, staff needs to reduce claim unit capacity considerably by at least 1,400 units. At the most recent community meeting, Bohannon appears to be proposing 1,200 units onsite max. That's assuming the heightened density increases. They that assumes they get those heightened density increases that they're looking for, which the housing element currently does not allow for. And then finally, if measure Y prevents the city from complying with state housing element law, it impedes and violates state housing law. As we know, state law supersedes local law in cases where the two are in conflict. So I am frankly at a loss as to why the city refuses to admit, given HCD's desire for a program to mitigate the constraint that is measure Y and the city's inability to produce or even conceive of a program or mitigation to measure Y. Why the city will still not acknowledge that a ballot measure, if a ballot measure does not pass, that measure Y violates state law and must be set aside. That happened in the city of Alameda. It can happen here. It should happen here. That's it for me tonight. Thanks so much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jennifer Martinez.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for letting us speak on this topic again. I am here to ask the city council to urge staff to move quickly and to do the work that HCD is asking it to asking to be done. In particular, I'd like to make sure that, excuse me, my dog has decided to bark at this moment. In particular, I'd like to encourage the staff to really take a look at what the formerly furthering fair housing requirements are. I've come to the council and the planning commission several times on this issue and continue to have to have deep concerns that we have not taken seriously how we not only are addressing discrimination, as was honored earlier in tonight's council meeting, but also that we are advancing fair housing in deeper ways by looking at the whole of the city and ensuring that opportunities for housing in high opportunity areas are part of our future plan. We know that we cannot go back to the ways things have been in the past. But this is really a plan for our future, for our children and grandchildren's future, to ensure that we have more inclusion and more just housing opportunities for everyone, regardless of income level in the city. And I do not see that in the plan right now. And HCD goes even deeper to say an analysis of what fair housing requirements should be and the impact of the programs and the site analysis as it relates to fair housing is not being done at the depth and level that is required. And and frankly, that is, you know, not only by law, but you know, from moral implications should be done for the future of San Mateo. So I want to encourage that to be recognized that that is a huge body of work. It needs to be done quickly and as a baseline process in addition to any additional programs or sites that need to be included in the future drafts of the housing element. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Vika Smaturi.
Hi, good evening, City Council. I'm my name is Vakas Smaturi, and I'm a renter living in District One. I'm here today to talk a little bit about my hope for the housing element. I really want to urge the city council to plan for two rezoning options in its general plan to ensure that it's able to comply with housing element law. As many commenters before articulated, it's incredibly important that we comply with housing element law because it puts our city at risk of lawsuits. It wastes taxpayer monies if we have to go to court and combat these lawsuits. And what this means is that we have a Plan A going above measure Y limits. That should include at least 12 stories and broad rezoning near transit. Then a Plan B, that is contingency for if the sale for if the city fails to overturn measure Y, that involves broad rezoning throughout the community up to measure Y limits. I want to also emphasize that as a renter and as someone who is neighbors with largely renters in my area, that this community is still facing directly the impacts of housing unaffordability. It is very, very difficult to live in San Mateo, and it continues to become more difficult every day. There are people here who simply cannot afford to live here. And there are people that are my neighbors and friends that are being displaced right now. What that means is that I'm not just asking you all to advance a housing element that includes these rezoning options because I want just lots and lots of housing. But I want that housing because I believe it directly contributes, and I know it directly contributes to a city that is more livable for all people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That was our last speaker. Thank you so much. We will close the public comment and turn to council. Oh, um, we maybe take a five minute break. Sound good? All right, see you back in five. Welcome back, everyone. Okay, so this is the time for public. So no, this is the time for council deliberation and comments. Who would like to start us off? Okay, council member hedges.
So just a couple of things. I want to make it clear that I'm very much in favor of the market rate housing. I do have worries about the overlay issue in R1 neighborhoods. I think it's going to, it may hurt us in the long run in passing the general plan. I wanted to say that I have to join in with Mr. Grimes about Bridgepoint. The parking lot's been quite full lately. We have Nordstrom's racks coming. Mimi's has been rebuilt with a larger restaurant. We have the Fish Grill already gone into to where the old greeting card store was and fish or Chick-fil-A is planning to come into the other side. I and his comment about Benihana, I hadn't heard, but I'll certainly be there to eat if it is. It's actually a great place to live around because it's in walking distance of most of the most of the mixed use area. So I can under, I would say that if HCD realizes how actually how lively it is with long-term leases, it may still give us a problem with using Bridgepoint. And PS, we can already build nine-story housing there because the height limits are seven stories in in that shopping center. So I don't have anything else right now unless something somebody else says brings it to mind.
Can I ask for a clarification? So, Councilmember Hedges, when you say you have concerns about the affordable housing overlay, does that? I, I think we all have concerns about, you know, many aspects of the plan. The question before us is, is this something that we want staff to explore and come back to us with more information about?
I'm never against exploring anything.
Okay.
Just, I just think it, it may be, and I'm, and, and I think we'll see as public comment comes in and people in the R1 neighborhoods realize that we may be planning to do it, that you may, we may see that it might not be wise to include it if we want to pass the general plan. So, I'm not against exploring it.
Anyone else?
Thank you, okay. I'm gonna give this a try. I appreciate this slide and I'm gonna start with this. Overall, I'm, I'm okay with everything listed. I'm not against overlays. I am a little concerned that it may not meet all our needs. So, I, I am in favor of exploring them, but I feel like we're gonna need to do more. I am definitely interested and in favor, interested in and in favor of an updated sites inventory capacity. I, I do think we're, I, you know, from, from what I see in the, in the letter, I, I think that will be a good step. And frankly, I think we need to go farther on that than I think is being implied here. And so, I'll try to discuss what I mean in a moment. I agree with the idea of allowing smaller housing projects to be approved administratively. I think we could, in fact, potentially consider going a step farther on that by considering not necessarily bringing forward projects that are protected by the Housing Accountability Act and/or the objective design standards that we're working on before planning commission and/or council if they can't really reject them. I feel like that's part of what we're thinking about when we're thinking about this. So, I, I think that could help reduce time in the process potentially. So, I would, I would encourage going farther on that. Agree with the potential parking standard reductions and modifications that I think Steph outlined. And then, just in addition to that, let me just see if I had any other thoughts on these bullets. No. There, yeah, there was talk about eliminating pre-applications. I think that sort of fits within there. I, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of that. Oh, yes, thank you. Right. And, you know, I, I think, I think what I see here related to Measure Y is fine. But I'm, I'm just, I'm just worried that there might be more to it than this. But I think in the interest of trying to be brief and cogent, I might not go farther on that tonight necessarily, except to, you know, I feel like I brought my concern forward about there potentially being more to it. And I'll defer to Steph on that for now. I think, yeah, so, I think in addition to the, all these, you know, I'm just concerned that a lot of the letter is similar to the last letter we received. And I'm, I'm concerned that we've been given the same notes from HCD on some portions of the elements and, and I'm, I'm concerned that we won't be successful unless we make some more substantive changes than I think are being suggested here. That said, I am not interested in arbitrarily holding up the process. I want us to get a certified housing element as soon as possible. I'm, I'm concerned that if we don't make some more substantive changes though, then we may just find ourselves here a few months later with some more notes. And that would, that would take up extra time. So, with that in mind, I, I think there, I would like to see council's interest in asking the staff, complete, seek to revise its site analysis for, for more completion. One that quantitatively analyzes the likelihood of residential capacity and non-residential zones based on development trends. And, and I think that goes into asking, you know, reaching out to any property owners of the sites that have not been reached out to yet, if there are any, to try and get more of a, of a clear picture on realistic capacity. I think there, you know, the more we can, the more clarity we can get on that, the better. And it seems to me that HCD is asking for something to that. I don't think it would necessarily take a tremendous amount of time. I think what I'm suggesting is something that could potentially be done in weeks and months. But I guess as an example, the, the city of Campbell apparently made extra efforts beyond ours to, you know, contact all these owners and just, I think, more methodically. You know, if an owner was interested and voiced that interest in having residential development within the, the planning period, we could keep it on there. And then, for example, it, it seems to me that having a, a full density expectation would be, would be warranted potentially. But if it, if they say they're not interested, then we have to take that site off. And, and if, and if we don't hear from them or are unsure, then it's, it seems to me that we may need to consider adopting a more quantitative projection of, of the units and density that we could expect from, from that site as opposed to, I think, maybe the ranking system that we have in place currently. And then, with regard to suitability of the non-vacant sites, I guess I, I mentioned a bit during my questioning that I'm, I'm concerned, particularly with the language in, in the HCD note, you know, saying, "For your information, the housing element must demonstrate existing uses are not an impediment and will likely discontinue in the planning period. Absent findings based on substantial evidence, the existing uses will be presumed to impede and will not be utilized." Of course, that would be a huge problem. And, and I, I feel like clearly there's some, some, some language here that has not been, you know, completely, clearly, you know, explicated here. I, I heard the deputy directors, I feel like interpretation of where we are. And I guess I'm just worried that since we've received two notes with very similar wording, that we may not be where we need to be there. And I think one way we could mitigate that is, is through this, is this revision and, and reaching out to more folks. I feel like if, if we're able to do that, we might be able to understand, you know, like as we're potentially adding sites and reviewing sites that had been discounted before, we might end up with a, something that, that, that might be a bit more amenable to HCD based on the language that they've had. It might help with some of the other notes and topics that we've received related to, you know, analysis for affirmatively furthering fair housing and more. So, I guess that's kind of my main ask and I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Do you mind going back one slide? Thanks. Just going bullet point by bullet point, I would say for the first three, yes, we should, at a minimum, do the work, do the study, revisit all three. We may have reservations when you, with what you bring forward, but I think we should be doing that homework and that research. And I think we need to do it quickly as we've all been stating. When it comes to the smaller project units with less than 20 houses, I think that that is an amenable idea. I'd like to see it defined a little more and also have some ideas as to what it really means. How many, how many projects would have fallen into that in the last couple of years? When it comes to potential parking, I have some concerns. Specifically, there was a project that was, you know, Builders Remedy project that was being explored. And they're looking at 700 units and having less than two-thirds parking spaces per unit. My concerns around that are the majority of the places we're looking to build dense housing are also the places where we have the most amount of people in a low, lower income brackets and more reliability on cars, unfortunately. Even if I optimistically think that, you know, in the next eight years, 20 to 30% of people may be able to divorce themselves from having to have a car, I still think that some of the numbers that are being proposed are just too, too drastic. And when you look at more suburban neighborhoods where, sure, you know, if I lived in, in Baywood, sorry, I'll pick on Baywood. If I lived in Baywood, I could definitely do away with having my two-car or three-car garage. In other neighborhoods like Sunny Bray and Cent, North Central, that, that's just not really feasible. So, I just want to make sure that we, we, we kind of study that and see what, what the proposal would be for reducing parking. It's not that I'm not pro getting away from cars. I just, I also think it's not, not realistic to think that we're gonna be able to do away with that many based on the numbers of housing and units we're trying to put in. Nothing else for that slide. Can we go to the next slide? I don't really have much to add about Measure Y. I think, you know, definitely putting in what, what we'd like the Measure Y initiative to look like and what changes that might make would be a good idea. But I think we also have to be realistic that it may not pass and then we're back to the same place we are. So, again, just capturing that would be good. Skipping down to pre-app, I would say I think that that is an opportunity. I think streamlining the process makes sense as long as we make sure that we increase, not decrease, the number, the amount of neighborhood engagement and the PC study sessions. And that's all I have for that. I went black, sorry. I don't have any other comments that, so I'll yield. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Okay, if you could go back one slide. Thank you. So, my comments are similar to Councilmember Newsom's. I, yes, I think we need to have a study session on the quasi-public sites, the affordable housing overlay and the updated sites inventory capacity. What I really would appreciate is that there are lots of very specific examples of what could this mean? Because you threw a lot out tonight. And, you know, we know you've done a lot more thinking than we have about this. But what does it mean in one part of town versus another? What is, what does an affordable housing overlay really, really do? And what's the impact on the areas? So, I think that, that's, that's gonna help us make a decision as well as help the community understand as well. Definitely updated sites inventory capacity based on both direction you've received as well as what we're seeing other areas do. Allowing the smaller housing projects to be approved administratively. Conceptually, yes, I would like to understand what that means and what does that mean about, you know, what elements are available for input? Or is it just whatever it is? You have to say yes. The potential parking standard reductions, obviously, we have state laws that govern that. So, some developers say, "Thank you for the state law minimums. We want to build more." But I'm open to talking about it. I'm concerned that in a lot of these places, the parking will just spill over and it will go into the neighborhoods and then it becomes a problem that we're dealing with right now. So, I think that's it somewhere. The next slide, yep. In terms of Measure Y comment, I'm all for being more explicit in commitment. I'd just like to see what that means. I'm just, you probably don't exactly know what it means yourself, but I'm a little fuzzy as to what that could be. If the commitment to a minimum amount of housing capacity and the density, if they're both within Measure Y capabilities, then I am fine with doing that now. If, when the ballot measure goes up, I'm gonna do everything I possibly can to make it be successful. But right now, we have, we, our constituents have spoken and we have to make sure that anything we do stays within Measure Y today. Definitely open to eliminating the pre-app requirement for housing projects. I'd love, I'd appreciate seeing sort of a layout of what happens today versus what could happen under what you're thinking about. Because what you've got here is a big concept, but what are the steps? How are we, you know, decreasing time as well as others have said, including improved neighborhood input and study sessions? And at one point, maybe it was in the, the pre-app, you were talking about wanting to have, maintaining opportunity for public comment in the process robust. And then you said that there's only gonna be seven days for the public to make their comment. And I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't finish my note. But somewhere in there, there was something in the process, one of the processes, that there would only be seven days for public comment to be given. And Diana, it might have been you that said that.
Well, I think it was actually Zach, but it's a statutory requirement. We typically do many more than seven days. It's just this, we have to prove to the state that it was available for at least seven days.
Okay, because seven days to me is totally unacceptable.
We, we've always done more than that.
Okay, great, then we're fine. And, yeah, I think as, as Mayor Lee had talked about earlier, really talking about what does the housing overlay mean? What does the affordable housing overlay mean on the quasi-public sites? More examples, the better. Yep, that's, that's it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Hedges, did you want to clarify on any of the other bullet points?
I'm good with everything except the things I brought up, so.
Okay. Great. Well, as someone who's been talking about ways to encourage development on our quasi-public sites for affordable housing, I am thrilled to see this make the list finally. So, that's great news. And I, I think that to Deputy Mayor Nash's point, it would help us and I, and the public when we're it would help us and the and the public when we're going through the study session to kind of talk in more specificity with example cases so that the community and us as policymakers can can start to visualize more concretely. Those of us who are not like deeply fluent in development process, I think it helps to use examples like, for example, St. James Ami Zion Church and their interest in in developing affordable housing and how this policy or this program would enable or support or encourage development of affordable housing on a site like theirs, for example. I, I certainly support the, the study of the affordable housing overlay. I think it's, it was helpful for me to better understand the, the level of site-specific analysis and the criteria that will be applied so that it's, it's not a blanket zone necessarily that we're creating. It's, it's an overlay that would apply to specific sites that meet specific criteria. So with that in mind, I think it's certainly worth exploring. I definitely agree with Councilmember Lorraine's points about and others' points about needing to update the sites inventory capacity. I, I see a real need in, in taking, I think, a more rigorous and quantitative approach within, with a more conservative and defensible lens. I, I have concerns about the, some of the disconnects between the feedback that we're getting and, and where the, the gap is in misunderstanding our communication. And I'm, I'm deeply concerned about the timeline that we're presenting. I, we've been in this now several rounds with high confidence that we're going to get it this time. And at this point, we're talking about very real consequences as it relates to funding eligibility that will potentially dry up this year, 2023. And we are looking at a project, a very important city-owned land asset that has the potential to develop 60 affordable housing units on Talbot site that could be coming then following year that might not have funding eligibility. So for me, the, there's very grave concerns that I want to raise about the timeline that we're presenting. And on the timeline that, that staff has presented, because I don't see, let's say proactive, community-based, equity-based, additional community input opportunities. I, I'm not sure why the, the timeline is as prolonged as it is. So if, if HCD has explicitly asked us to do more proactive, community-based outreach, I'm not, I'm not sure I'm seeing that in the plan as it's proposed. And, and without that in place, I, I, I'm not sure I understand why we're on such a prolonged timeline. And I haven't heard what the, what the impacts of another round of, of comments would be in terms of pushing us past the December funding expiration date that we're looking at right now for state funding. So those, those things are certainly in top of mind as along with the, the increased risk factor of more and more builders remedy projects coming down and, and the litigation and cost that that could incur. So I, I also would agree that I think that I was happy to see this idea of allowing smaller housing projects to be approved administratively. I think the more that we can streamline, the better. I, I would agree that it's also worth exploring those that fall under the objective, objective design standards and the HIA guidelines that they, that they might also be administratively approved as well. I think that that's, those can make material differences in timeline and feasibility ease for pushing projects forward. I'm, I'm certainly interested in learning more about the potential parking standards reduction and modifications. I, you know, I think, I think everything, all the tools and the tool belt at this stage. Can I see the next slide? And yes, to all of these too. So does anyone have any other last thoughts that they'd like to wrap up with? No? Okay. Do you have what you need from us?
Yes. Just to summarize, we will be, once we've had a chance to further develop these proposals, we, we will be scheduling a study session to bring them back. We also did hear that you want to see the draft language that these major Y commitments would look like in terms of the updated policy and programs. And then similarly, for more details on what elimination of the pre-app would look like within our development review process. So both of those items, we would bring those back with the study session as well. And beyond this, I didn't hear anything in terms of further direction I did that a majority of council wanted us to include in this study session. Along with this, as we continue to update the housing element, we'll provide other updates as we identify changes in policies that may be appropriate to address these comments.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, well, we are ready to move on to reports and announcements. Yes.
I might be jumping the line here because I'm sure Rich is going to want to address this too. But one of the things that was brought up a lot in public comment was the concern with the generator at 1400 Fashion Island Boulevard. So I wanted to ask a couple of clarifying questions. Is that okay? One is, are we validating that there is no violation of noise ordinance with them running that 24 hours a day?
Yeah, so actually utilities and emergency generators are listed as special provisions that are exempt from the municipal code noise ordinance.
Okay, but there's no emergency use for why it's being used, right? Is it, so I, I can tell you, like, I, I work in the printing business. I've, I've run a printing company for about nine months off a generator because we didn't have enough power. Is the problem that they're waiting for more power from PG&E or?
No, so this was a, this was a planned shutdown to, so that, so that PG&E could de-energize and then re-energize the power source. So it was off for 24/7 throughout the weekend. Or it was on, excuse me, the generator is considered emergency because they were keeping what was considered essential life safety equipment running during that time. The generator did go off this morning. They've been re-energized. You know, with respect to the, the site location, they do look to cite it in as optimal as a place that they can. I know that people are talking about moving it to the back. They have to consider where the power source is. We can certainly go back to the developer and see if it's possible if, if they can relocate that generator. You know, but ultimately they do have the ability to have the generator. It doesn't require any, any permitting from us. And, and they are able to utilize it in certain circumstances.
Okay, the, I guess the other question is just whatever we can do to have them move it to the back of the building. I mean, it, they obviously are going to probably need 220 or a big, big piece of cabling to, to whatever their power source is for the building. But if it were being behind it, that would give them a whole nother level of protection.
We will, we will communicate with them and give them the feedback from the neighbors and, and see if they would be amenable to moving the generator.
It would be the neighborly thing to do. Anything we can do to encourage it.
I have a couple of things to bring up, actually. I want to give you some background. I've already given it to Drew and give the council some background. In negotiating with Longfellow about the two buildings across Mariners Island, they agreed to move the HVAC system to the back. They have insulated it even though they moved it into the back and built a little shell around the HVAC system. They've allowed us to have access to their chargers for our membership and a lot of other things. They were very forthcoming and they were really anxious to meet with us. So in those meetings, they told me about 1400 because nothing came across, no negative deck, nothing on this project. And so I contacted Rendell and he was nice enough to give me their contact information for the people who are moving this project. Several attempts, they would not come back to me. So I Googled the company and the only thing I could find on them that was useful was their, their person who was doing the leasing. So I spoke with her and a couple of my questions were, what level of science are they going to use? Anything above two is unsafe. And let me tell you how I know that. We have a gilliated scientist that was on my committee when negotiating with Longfellow and he told me he would move above two. So there are some issues with escaping that could be dangerous above two. So I also asked them about the HVAC system. They told me it would be, the woman told me it would be internal and it looks like it probably is going to be. Nothing was coming, came up about the generator because there was no way to ask people who actually knew about that kind of thing. So I would suggest that when we approve something, that we actually realize there's 250 people living across the street from it or approximately that much, that it is very noisy. I sent you a video of it and you heard how loud it was. And so, and I could actually play it here and hold up the microphone, but nobody would like it. So I'm going to make a further suggestion that we have a study session on life science like San Carlos is doing. Because there are some negatives with it. There's some very big positives. They will have people in the offices more often than we now have with the dot coms. But they'll also be in fewer numbers because of the lab space. So it's bringing people into the economy, but it's also not overstaffing the buildings. It helps with our economy. I'm not against them, but we want to be safe. So I would like to set up a study session about how we could remedy some of these problems that might come up when life science come in, when they're absolutely unwilling to talk to the community about what they're doing. So that being said, I would like, like us at some point to do that if the other council members would like to. I know that it's come up several times in talking with people about these life science projects. So that's the, oh, and I think there's a fallback position with not having them move it is doing what another developer who's doing very nice to community does is actually build a structure around it and put the kind of insulation from noise on the three sides of that, that structure that will help dampen the noise to the community. That would be a minimum of what people that really want to live with the community would do. Because this isn't going to go away. Every time they have an emergency, I'm going to, my phone's going to ring off the hook like it did. When people are telling me, and they're very reasonable people, that they can't go to sleep at night, that's something we have to deal with. So the other thing I want to talk about is I'm trying to actually interface with all of the community. We have various in District Four, we have various levels of economics in District Four. Where I live is probably the highest level of ability to come up with cash versus many of the other areas. And so in a, walking about five miles on Saturday, talking to people, good, many of them are very happy with the city, but there was a number of complaints too. And I would just list that traffic was highest and it will always be, but crime was right below that on the complaints. There were several people that were, were very perplexed and I think Drew's gotten these emails. And so has Azalea on the outage of streetlights in an area where they've already had quite a, quite a bit of crime. So, and I know we're trying to address that because PG&E is being obstinate on, on dealing with it. But you know, I've had, you know, heartbreaking stories about somebody who makes their living with their tools, having $5,000 for the tools stolen off their truck. This is happening in working class neighborhoods because they're the people that have the tools on their trucks. And we've had four vehicles stolen out of Harbor Town and they've all been trucks with tool racks on them, no cars ever. So that's the extent of my comments. And I would like to get some clarity on whether we want to have a study session on biotechs and conversion to biotech and what we might need to do with our codes with it.
I'm interested in learning more about biotech generally, but I think it's just, I don't know if that's something that would be folded into like the general, a general plan study session that we would be accomplishing anyway, when we're looking at different kinds of development types.
I think the nature of it is, is different than anything else we've dealt with because of the safety issues.
Yeah, I mean, I think if, if there's interest in doing something specific to that, we would probably do it as a separate study session because otherwise it would, it would be at a, at a more cursory level. You know, my, my, my comment would be though, that the, the group that, that would do that is the same group that's doing the general plan is the same group that's doing the housing element. And, and, and everything's important. So I mean, we will, we, we will prioritize accordingly.
I'm sorry, did I just read over you?
No, I, I let you. I was just curious, do we have an agenda is to have a follow-up from the flooding from December 31st? I know we hired an outside consultant. Do we have a plan at some point to have that presented?
Yes, we've met with a group of lagoon residents to effectively validate the results. We're still working with the consultant, I believe Public Works met with them last week to then set up or start coordinating for the other smaller community meetings that we're going to have. So we'll have all those meetings and then we'll come back to council with a sort of wrap of everything of all, you know, kind of what the findings were and then what the community meetings accomplished.
Yes. Mayor, I, 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 I just, I, I feel like I maybe should have interjected a moment ago in the previous item, but I, I would like to just see if there's an opportunity to just ask the council, since we haven't left yet tonight, whether there was interest in pursuing what I was mentioning earlier. I think, I think, you know, Zach said he didn't hear from a majority, but I think there were two council members who were interested in potentially pursuing more of a revision of sites capacity. And I just wanted to see if I could check whether another council member was interested in doing that and if we could potentially add that. If so.
I can interject here. So we've, the, the challenge with that is we've moved on from the housing element item to the reports and announcements and, you know, the, the staff like who is here, you know, between Christina and Zach and Diana that could help inform some of the discussion has left. So I, I would ask if the council is just comfortable sticking with the feedback that it provided during consideration of that agenda item.
I've got three items. And number one, earlier this week, I was up in Sacramento with a group of Peninsula electeds at a League of Cities, Cal Cities meeting. And we were all off advocating with our, you know, Assembly and State Senators. And we were focused on trying to advance the cause of having a permanent funding mechanism for affordable housing and homeless, homelessness services. And we met with State Senator Josh Becker, our Assembly Member Diane Pappin, Alex Lee Staff, Senator Scott Weiner, and there was obviously a lot of support for that. They're in the middle of going through all the They're in the middle of going through all the, the Proposition Committee work. And there seemed to be some avenues of hope that that could potentially come out of this session. So I took that as good news. So that was the first thing. And I would just recommend that everybody who has the opportunity go up and do that in Sacramento at some point. Secondly, just another plug, the 23rd to the 29th of April is the San Mateo Celebrates, which is the San Mateo Library's National Library Week set of activities. You all know about it. But on the Saturday, there's a readathon at the farmer's market at CSM. And they've asked all of us on council and city staff to come and read. So if anybody is interested, please, by all means, let James Moore or the staff know. And there's a big event at the library on Friday night, which would be great to see everyone there. It is the same night as the PAL dinner, so lots of festivities. And then, excuse me, I would, excuse me, I would be remiss if, if I didn't say something about all the public comment we heard tonight. I think we heard a number of our constituents with very different perspectives discussing the recent DA's report of April 5th. And I believe it's important that their concerns be addressed. So as a result, I would like to suggest that we put on our next agenda a discussion of the DA's report and consider what, if any, appropriate action should be taken by this council, whether about the, the items in the report or generally about what we do about code of conduct within our council and boards and commissions guidelines. So I would appreciate some feedback from my fellow council members.
I would be happy to provide some feedback on that. I am extremely disappointed in this proposal and I am not interested.
I'm, I'm open to having the conversation. I'm, I'm not sure what, what the expected outcome could be for doing such, but I'm definitely open to having the conversation.
So in, in your proposal, you're talking about doing a code of conduct for whom?
Well, first, the idea would be that staff would present to us so that everyone had the information. And then we could discuss, do we think we should do anything? If so, what should we do? And that could be related to the incidents within the report or more broadly, looking at our code of conduct in the guidelines. Or should we include certain procedures? I think what I heard tonight was that there's a feeling that there is nothing within our guidelines that allows us to take action should we need to. And that's something I think we should address.
So but when you're talking about a code of conduct, would that be for staff? Would it be for commissioners? Would it be for the council?
I, I would, I would suggest, and that would be part of our discussion, that it should be both for council and boards and commissions.
I think I'm okay with that.
So both the report as well as the code, the, what we do about the code of conduct.
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Okay, with that, tonight, we all adjourn. Thank you.